Call this special meeting of the town council's order at seven oh three P M. Please rise for lead leaders. All right, that brings us to our consideration of town council's proposed budget. Before we begin our discussions, I will just make a note to our counselors and public that we're going to do things a little bit differently this time, which is once we census relax on a better term on public scenarios we'd like to run, recess and Yolita has reasonably asked for about half hour to run scenarios to make sure that all the Is are dotted and Ts are crossed. So with that spirit, I'd like to turn it over to Brian to give an overview of.
Thank you so much Chair. As you know, last night, a referendum failed by one hundred and forty eight votes, two percent raised was failed. Our next referendum is June third, same library programming room here at Town Hall as a Tuesday, six A M to eight P M. In light of my last night's failure, I'm required to present another budget. I'm presenting a closed budget of a one point five percent spending increase compared to fiscal year twenty five. In your agenda, I believe should you actually, you should have in the agenda item is listing of all the cuts that I have on the town side of things. In total, the town operating budget adjustments result result in a reduction overall of two hundred and eighty eight thousand, one hundred and sixty nine dollars. From the May thirteenth referendum, it's a hundred and ninety two thousand. So from our last referendum to now, on the town side alone, we've got a hundred and ninety two thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars, plus an additional ninety five thousand, four hundred and ninety nine dollars. On the Board of Education side, a four hundred and forty nine thousand, five hundred and sixty dollar reduction was approved on May thirteen, twenty twenty five. This is an additional two hundred and twenty two thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollar reduction to achieve a one point five percent spending increase. In total, the Board of Operating Budget Adjustments result results in a reduction of six hundred and seventy two thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. The town's overall budget expenditures have been reduced, bringing the budget increased down from two percent to one point five percent in my proposal in comparison to twenty twenty five, last year's adopted budget. Additional detail, the Board of Education's operating budget expenditures, with this proposed budget is an increase of one point four six percent or six hundred and ninety three thousand, one hundred and three dollars. And the town's operating budget is an increase of one point zero six percent increase, a total of one hundred and forty nine thousand and fifty seven dollars. Note there at pause are the town increase that I'm proposing, one hundred and forty nine thousand, our each chip insurance costs alone are going up one hundred and thirty nine thousand. It doesn't go in everything else contractually or all the other increases. So it's, it's gonna be a painful year. Rose mill rate with this budget is twenty seven point one nine, reflecting reduction of ten point five eight mills. The mill rate's gonna go down ten point five eight with this rose was it or a twenty eight point zero one percent compared to the current mill rate of thirty seven point seven seven mills. I can tell you that each referendum costs between five and six thousand dollars. We are going into our third. Kathy Gagun, our town clerks here, she's gonna talk a little bit about the timing in regards to the, the upcoming referendum, Kathy.
Hi, everybody. I'm just gonna give you a quick breakdown of what it takes in order to order the ballots and have them in place. If you guys get the question to us tomorrow, like as soon as possible, we have to publish the eat last to the town. And then I work with registrars to create a ballot. There's a new system to creating the ballot that adds a whole extra day to it because of the new tabulators that you're all aware we have. We have to submit the question to this new company. The company has to create a template of it. They send me the P V S that takes a full twenty four hours. Then I sent it to the printers and from there the printers can get it, get us the actual printed ballots in twenty four hours. The hiccup for this one is that Monday's Memorial Day, we're losing a day. So I did the timeline and just so that you guys know, with getting the question tomorrow, we won't have the ballots until best case scenario, Wednesday afternoon. That would be Wednesday, the twenty eighth. And it could be as late as Thursday, the morning of Thursday, ninth, which means that as far as absentee ballots go, I can only issue them to people who walk in per state statute, we can't mail them for any referendum that's under three weeks notice. So those persons would only have the opportunity to get an absentee ballot on Thursday, the twenty ninth and Monday, June second. That literally gives them only two days to vote if they're absentee. I've already gotten phone calls from people, you know, upset about that, but that's our timeframe. It sounds like a lot when we have two weeks, but we really don't. And that's why I wanted to explain to you what happens once we get your question. Okay?
Thank you, Kathy. Moreover, if, if I have a complete, I asked our tax collector for some complete information, should the referendum, the budget process extend beyond July first? If we do not have approved budget by July first, if that does occur, section C nine dash ten of our town charter defines out what exactly will occur, but we will basically have to send out tax bills based on this year's real rate of three point seven seven, which will cause people to get exorbitant tax bills. Likely with the mill rate dropping the way it is and what's gonna happen is we would likely have to issue refunds. As you can imagine, to, to get a service to handle all that billing and all those refunds, there'll be a significant cost. I had her put something together and once it's finalized, I will email that out to it. We get close to getting to July and it's getting later. So that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. And thank you, Kathy, for giving us an explanation of the, of the timeline. One more thing, Chief Chair. Yes. Barry Bernardi, our financial advisor is on here, on, and should we need him later to talk about anything in relation to unassigned fund outs? Any questions to you? Thank you. With that, I'll go to questions and comments and any suggestion, revisions to town managers' proposal.
Thank you, Brian. Fortunately, that failed yesterday. Decent budget for, I know a lot of surrounding towns are also struggling. I think Bolton's just failed yesterday in some other towns. Again, we're doing the best we can in a situation and it's not, we're not lying when things will be reduced, but saying that, Brian, I asked specifically where or what department would be affected. I don't know if you, I know we've been busy, maybe not saw it, but you have a hundred and eighty eight thousand, seven hundred and forty seven. Can you give the council an idea of what services or what departments might see those reductions?
First, I would send out an email to all the directors and staff. Would anyone voluntarily look to cut? As we know, Mike Openson already stepped forward and did that. And I would ask again, and, and, you know, obviously, you know, I walked in this morning crying and stuff.
Sure.
No other way to put it. And everyone's worried. And I can't call someone to my office just to ask him a question without them thinking they're getting the call to, you know, be told their job's on the line. It's awful. So the first step would be determine if anyone would voluntarily look to either, you know, reduce hours, if they wanted to, if they had other job opportunities, those sorts of things. And from there, we try to lower that number down as best we can. I'd work with all the department heads to see where their cuts are and then determine all the departments. So name, that's, that's where the, the, the cuts could potentially. So I can't isolate it to one. I'd have to look at the salaries. We'd look at contracts. Let's say we have a part time person who's a, a union person. Well, they, they have it, it's called, I call it a trickle down. If they have seniority in that position in that department, we think that we can get rid of, which there are none, but we would have to do that. Then that person would have to, would have the rights to the next person lower than seniority. And so there are so many variables to determine where we would find that money and how we could best place it without hurting the, the most, the people. You know, I can't give you a definitive, I don't, I'm not sure the board has their definitive list of who's gonna get cut at this point, but I have a very small pool, very small. And, and, you know, each department with a handful of people. So it, it could touch any department. So there's just a lot of variables that we have to, we have to consider. And then, you know, considering the services that are gonna get caught and how that impacts the town, those weigh heavily on me.
So it's, I said, well, that's night, a couple of questions and this morning we got some follow up. And one of them was trash pickup, recycle, whatever we wanna call it. It's a five year contract.
Yep.
So we're unable to even give them a call and be like, this is bad here, can you help us out? I know we've done that with other like fuel and stuff, that's not, is that?
It's an massive contract. And companies make purchases and hiring people and such based on contracts, you know, with towns. In order to get out, there's one, there'd have to be a legal review on our side, then likely some negotiations with the, the contract. And I'm certain there'd be some sort of penalties or buyouts after that on top of legal fees and then on top of, we no longer have trash service for everyone. So it's, it's a good idea, you know, to look into that. But we entered into a five year contract, which we're in the second year of now, and it's maybe it's something we consider at when we're going into year four, into year five, but it could be problematic to say the least. We do not have it. We don't have a town dump. We don't, we don't have a transfer station here. Working on an agreement with Stafford to, to bring your own bulk items there in the future. So it'd be problematic and costly just to get out of that contract.
And then, and I'm not, again, I'm not sure Jacob and Christopher, you share it with your caucuses or not. One of the other questions I did ask, any open positions that can be put on hold? And one was commented that laborer, which is about eighty three thousand, four hundred and two dollars. Would it be a smart idea at this time just to put that on hold and that's another eighty three thousand dollars? Or you're gonna hire somebody while you're laying off people? Just wanna?
Right, well, that, that was already budgeted for, but it's certainly up to your consideration.
Yeah.
And you asked what open positions we have, not whether or not I can afford to get rid of them. Remember, they cut in group three, the position four years ago from, from D P W in good faith, saying they would restore it the following year. Well, guess what? We all know it has not been restored and now we have this one as a potential hire. So those are all things, you know, we would have to weigh. But, you know, again, like the trash, it's a good recommendation and, and something to look at.
I mean, I don't want trash or anything cut either, I get it, but I mean.
We have to look at.
I have to make a choice, you know, in a situation like this. I think it's not a bad idea, I think. And as quickly, I forgot my budget book, but I know recreation department, their staff gets basically paid out of their money they make. Like is there someone that's full time that could take half from the general, but you know, the operational and go take some out of their fund or you're gonna mean like you split so?
There's very little that comes out of the.
Yeah, I thought it was.
Fund into their, their salary.
Yeah, I thought it was, I almost thought, I didn't know if there's room for you to do something like that to save like fifteen, twenty thousand dollars.
That is.
Then the person still gets to keep their job.
That's a slippery slope to get into. And, you know, it's, we've had some good years to, to build that fund up based on, remember, we, we had supplemented that fund or supplement the parks and recs. So I do not, I absolutely do not think that's a, a good idea. And I, I would rather remove than.
Okay.
Get into that tricky situation.
I don't wanna take up other people's time, but that's all we have questions.
Maybe I'll just add and just one quick note and then I'll go to someone else. You know, one thing just to keep in mind is the fiscal year begins July one, you know, and found out the budget failed less than twenty four hours ago. So I'm sure, you know, Brian and Yolita and town department heads will continue to think about, you know, how to come up with reductions and they might have better ideas than the next couple of weeks rather than what they have now. I guess my, my point is, it's like, this is a good conversation to have, but, you know, the, the town, I'm sure will take good advantage of the next few weeks to really sort things, things out.
Yeah, and, and I don't want it to sound, I don't want it to sound, yeah, wrong here and, and I go, Colleen wasn't suggesting any of those things, you were just asking.
Oh, yeah.
You get the wrong idea. She's just asking about those and that's what we have to do, so I embrace that.
And none of those required even a job reduction. It was just thinking about going outside the box. Yeah, I don't want anybody to be reduced. So those all were ways of preventing anybody sounds like, cause we can't control what board does with theirs. So, yeah, thank you, Brian, for making that clear and I wanna make that clear.
Sure, so thanks. So Brian, just for clarity, your budget includes clawback of two hundred thousand of the four hundred thousand that you had on the unassigned fund out. So going, twenty thousand going back into the unassigned.
Correct, so two hundred, we're using two hundred and then we're, the previous budget had four hundred thousand, we're, we're, I'm recommending keeping two hundred thousand. This is after careful talks with Yolita and other advisors over the last, that's, that's what I'm recommending. Yes.
So in respect to your budget, it's still a little too high. Perhaps. Yet we still have to remember that, you know, we're talking about cutting our budget by a certain amount, but residents of this town gotta cut their budget by three point two hundred dollars. So they have to come up with some way to come up with an extra three point three hundred dollars out of their budgets to, to fund basically a zero budget. And then now we're asking them to even pay more. So look at our history of how, what kind of tax increases we have and we're seeing just because it's, it's nobody's fault, it's just the way it looked out with reassessment, that, you know, people are seeing double digit increases in their taxes. And if you look at our history, we've never had a double digit tax increase. So, you know, we're asking the residents to pay double digit tax increase on top of these additional tax increases that we're trying to pass here. And now this is the reason why we're here on our third referendum now is because we're really trying to push too much additional taxes onto the residents of this town. And they've, they've been pretty, pretty clear that they're not gonna take that, they're not happy about that. So I think, I think realistically, if we want this budget to pass, and I think it'd be a huge mistake to go like we did last year on a fourth referendum, I think we have to come down a little bit more. And I would propose a one point two percent increase over the previous budget, stick with four, two hundred thousand dollar additional fund outs usage on top of what the original budget earlier said. And even that, I think is gonna be a challenge. But I think it stands a reasonable chance because it puts the mill rate pretty close to twenty seven percent. It shows that the town has to make a sacrifice like the people in our town do. And I think the people understand, you know, there has to be a little bit of an increase because, you know, costs have gone up and we're gonna have to make cuts, the town's gonna have to make cuts, the board's gonna have to make cuts, but so do the people in our town. So.
Thank you, Counselor Shay. It's, uh, Counselor Beavis.
So I, I had a clarifying question. So the two hundred thousand dollars that we're talking about from on-site fund balance, is that going back to our original proposal, which we had stipulated that was a hundred and sixty thousand for the Fitch study and one forty something for Board of Education?
Yes.
Okay, so that goes back.
Wait a minute, what do you mean?
Well, because what originally.
That's what I didn't put forward. So just two hundred thousand.
So we're not doing the original. So we're, so we're, we're eliminating that, but we're still using two hundred thousand in the unassigned fund balance to mitigate the tax increase.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, but we're not restoring the items that we had asked to be restored in the last budget.
That is my proposed.
So would the, is a true one point five percent spending increase net of all fund balance usage?
Yes.
But, so, okay, so thank you for clarifying that. With respect to the one point five percent, how did you arrive at that? How did you determine that should be the target number?
Based on failed referendum, after a failed referendum into our third referendum, looking at what I think is reasonable and fearing a zero, that's where I, a zero percent, that's, that's where I came in. You know, in consideration of all factors.
Okay, thank you. And then, piggybacking on Commissioner Mudd's question about the trash item, just, this came up a little bit after the last meeting, did a little bit of, so just to be clear, we're proposing, we proposed our original two point nine nine percent, with then we went down to two percent and now one point five percent. Inflation in the central core was two point nine percent, inflation in the central area was twenty two point three percent. So we're not keeping up with inflation again. So every time we do that, we, we ourselves a little bit more and we've been cannibalizing ourselves for quite a number of years. So we understand that, again, the insurance company's gonna get paid, we're gonna get paid, every service is gonna get paid, everybody's gonna get paid. So that means that we start to eliminate services and we eliminate additional services to satisfy the reduction in the budget and the need to compensate and, you know, the insurance company especially, need to compensate those people which keep raising their costs and then we keep paying them. So one of those things is significantly the trash budget, which we don't really ever talk about. We I think that you've done a good job with, you know, negotiating a five year contract, but we never really talk about what it costs us to throw our stuff in, in the landfill. Connecticut right now sends our trash to Pennsylvania and Ohio actually. So we, we, we run out of space, we don't have any place to send this stuff, that's where we, we send a lot of it. So it's extremely expensive, it keeps going up. The one point three three million dollars is actually fifty percent of our entire health insurance costs, our entire health insurance costs this year, which is exceeding many other years, is two point six six million. Our, our trash disposal is fifty percent of that. Our trash disposal is more than the entire community services budget by over a hundred thousand dollars. And it's way more than all of the land use boards, wetlands, public health, agriculture commission, engineering, building official and the town clerk by another half million dollars. So it's huge, two percent of our whole budget. Doesn't include bulky waste, which is a capital item, which is good to know because I think that that's important to keep. But there are Connecticut programs which other towns have been using successfully, which have either, you know, pay, pay by unit weight or pay as you throw. There's a, there's a couple of different scenarios here where people actually pay for what they throw away and it has the effect of reducing the amount of refuse and the amount of cost by forty to fifty five percent. So I think it's, and that's based on, I'm looking at the fact sheets, they're available on the connecticut. Dot dot website. So I think it's really important for us to look at that because when we talk about all the services and we talk about the things that we need to sacrifice, we never talk about that one. And of all of the things that we could do, that is something that would be a benefit both, both in reduce cost, reduce waste and would really, could really positively affect our budget. So I would throw that forward as something that we should look at. And I'm not suggesting that we break the contract right now, but I think that it's something that we need to do some long-term planning on. Because we're not gonna get out of this particular situation right now without long-term planning. I'm hoping that the shift of the tax burden from corporate business properties to homeowner properties is something that we may be able to revisit, depending on what happens in the economy and whether this real estate thing is above or not. And I would also like to make sure we do, and I appreciate the chair's understanding that, that, that the, the heads of the departments have to look at what they're going to do, have to evaluate, but I think that it is essential for us to try to look at, if we're talking about we're gonna cut services, we're gonna try to reduce percentages, that we have to understand the impacts of what we're doing. No company on face of this planet where any of us as people who are in charge of professional services, which in, well, is included a lot of this here, none of us could walk into a manager or a C E O of board of directors and propose to make either increases or cuts without identifying the impacts of those based on a vibe. You don't plan a budget on a vibe. And so I think it's prudent for us to do the investigation that Colleen was just asking for and that we're discussing here tonight. So I wanna make that very, very clear. And the other thing that I wanna make clear, because there was some communication back and forth, that there is, that, that there's a lack of transparency in the budget process and I want to make sure that if anybody, we have a three hundred page budget document with a, an enormous amount of detail in it. We've had dozen, a dozen or more meetings. And then if anybody wants to reach out for an explanation, please do so. The information is there, the information is available to you. It is available to be fully explained to you, so please reach out. That's what Beavis, thank you.
Any other counselors, Counselor Ryan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just more of a general comment. I don't, I don't really know what to say. We've worked together for the last few months, trying to, you know, work through this budget. As Counselor Mudd mentioned, it's a, it's a tough year, right? And it's gonna be a tough year. It was a tough year when we were starting this process with the first budget and it's obviously getting tougher. It's tough for residents and taxes, it's tough for the town to continue to operate and the schools to continue to operate. And I'm genuinely appreciative of the council that we worked collaboratively and we, you know, we tried to come to consensus. We didn't all do that and so here we are. I mentioned last meeting, if we, if we didn't all support it or at least assign it, we would be back here, so we are. So I don't really know what to suggest. Because town council, you just haven't tried to engage with us and tried to, to, to reach common ground. So I just don't, I don't really have anymore to add, other than that I'm concerned for the town, I'm concerned for our schools and I'm obviously a mindful of, of, of burdens to taxpayers. I'm hesitant to, to use less unassigned fund balance in, in a year that's hopefully once in a generation where we have this chat, tax shift. I'm hesitant not to use that to help the town, to help taxpayers versus continuing to cut deeper and deeper into town services, so.
I didn't go yet.
Our Counselor Butler and then Counselor Shay.
I think we're exactly where Joe wants us to be, considering the fact that he sent out yet another text message to the town to vote no in the budgets. He must be extremely giddy to be here tonight. It's too bad that Alex appears, you have a fourth vote. It's gonna be a really long night for everybody. With that being said, I know that the ultimate message that's always put at forth by the T R T C as well as Counselor Shay is that we're always doomsdaying these things and that, you know, the board of ed lies, if you're sitting on piles and piles of money. The budgets that are being proposed don't even take into consideration the fact that the Board of Education's insurance line has gone up, I think somewhere in the, in the realm of like nine hundred thousand dollars. I'm sure none of you have watched their most recent meeting where they discussed where the cuts were gonna be coming from. Um, I'm sure none of you have watched their most recent meeting where they discussed where the cuts were going to be coming from. You know, we're supposed to have assigned town counselors attending the Board of Ed meetings, doesn't seem to be happening. Um, I mean, you can go around saying that the Board of Ed is full of it, that they're not going to cut anywhere. And that's pretty much the line that you guys keep going with. So, you know, all I have to say is good luck. You guys can swing with the budget as much as you want. Continue doing what you do, Joe, continue with your lovely pictures that you text to people at eleven P M. Um, I think it's negligent, I think it's not in the best interest of this town. I think your entire town committee has done a lovely job of making this a complete circus. And so I blame the town Republicans for continuously trying to tank this budget. And I don't think that includes every single town and Republican that's sitting at this table. I think Jacob did a wonderful job trying to come to consensus, Colleen did a wonderful job trying to come to consensus, Alex did a wonderful job. It all falls on Joe, so good luck. That's all I have to say.
Councilor Shay. So, ah, I wasn't going to bring it past, but since you wanted to go down the road, you want to go down, Shay, let's forget the past. But it seems like we need a history lesson here because seems like you forgot, pretty much forgot every single thing that happened last year when we tried to pass the budget. So, let's look at last year first of all. Um, the Democrats had the majority, right? You guys came in all cocky, you're going to pass the biggest expense increase to the Board of Ed, the Board of Ed has ever had. Completely ignoring the way the town votes historically, completely ignoring the demographics of this town, which is made up of twenty eight percent elderly, very little uh very little commercial base support for taxes. You're going to ram your big tax increase through, right? How'd that work out for you? Passed first referendum, because you had it, you had, you held the votes, you held the power, how'd that work out for you? So we had failed referendum number one. Then we get to failed refer, then we get to referendum number two. Referendum number two. Uh, let's see, we went from three million down to two point eight one three, so less than two thousand dollar reduction. You guys are still all gung ho, maybe you can get this down through uh through the taxpayers again, completely ignoring the history of this town, completely ignoring our demographics and what happened. Failed referendum number two, right? So now things are starting to get a little bit uglier, we're getting nasty emails coming in from uh fellow Democrat members about how certain, certain uh council members aren't falling into line, they're not going, they're not supporting this great increase that you guys want to do. And um so we went to referendum number three. So we dropped down from two point eight to barely a hundred thousand dollar reduction. And again, you guys thought for sure this is going to pass after being told you're not listening to the voters, you're not paying attention to anything that's going on in this town. You don't care, you're trying to get the Board of Ed as much as they possibly can and so you're still going to try to pass this budget. Failed referendum number three, now things are getting even nastier, we've got councilman Butler, foul mouth texting counselor uh Utecheck about how she's not falling into line.
Wait a minute, that has nothing to do with this budget, absolutely nothing.
It has everything to do with your attitude and how
Oh, this budget failed because my
and how and how this budget process has been taking place.
One of the times these counts.
I listen to you, Jen, I think you're listening.
Can we stick to this year's budget? I don't know what this has to do with this year's budget.
So we get to referendum number four. It's a reasonable budget is finally presented in such a way. And you brought up the fact that I haven't been supporting the budget. If I recall, the chairperson of the town council last year publicly indicated she would not support the fourth referendum. And low and behold, it passed, go ahead, look it up on Wednesday. Low and behold, it passed, so somehow, even if you don't get full support, if you go with what the voters are telling you to do and you listen to the people, a budget passes. So here we are again in this current year, so we have first referendum number one. We nailed our residents, not through our fault in any way, but we nailed our residents with the highest tax increase they've ever had. Double digit tax increases, it's a three point two million, like I just said, three point two million tax increase on their res, on our residents, they've had a sacrifice for their, for their own personal budget to absorb basically a zero percent tax increase, so you guys come along again, three percent, we're going to, we're going to tack on another three percent increase on top of the double digit increase that they already have. And anybody who sat through last year's referendum fiasco can't possibly be scratching their heads as to why that didn't pass. That was like a guaranteed loss, referendum number one we just had. So referendum number two, little bit of a reduction, a lot of uh doomsday stuff going around. Um, I tried to tell you guys that's still going to be too high considering the impact that the that the uh rebalance had on our residents. Doesn't matter, we're going to try to pass it anyway. And here we are doing referendum numbers two. So I can ask you, do you learn anything in this process in the past two years or is it just, it's all my fault somehow? Really? That's the best you got? Fine.
There was
Let's pass, let's pass a real budget.
Counselor Shay, all I'm asking, and and I'm glad that you appear to be engaged to how in the budget, is work with us, right? I mean, we, we, you and I met when we spoke last year, we, you know, I'm willing to speak this year, I've done that with all of your counterparts and you haven't put forward an option that you've been trying to work in the face, so you have tonight, so great. But, you know, all I'm asking for is to work together, that's all I ask for, right? And um, so we are where we are, right? Um, so that's all I asked for, is, you know, that didn't happen. Um, I mean, I don't even know if it's happening now, but um certainly there hasn't been any willingness to work with us.
Well, the first refer, the first referendum, you guys, you guys were very uh I want to say wrong, but uh
When you say you guys, I mean the other six.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I mean, look, we had our, we are a process, we discussed, um, we discussed, you know, different options, things like that, but you know, the rest of the, the rest of the, the rest of my party wasn't willing to go as down as as low as what I know we need to get down to to pass this budget. So I said, okay, you know, go ahead and vote, I'm just one person, you know, but if you want to vote for this budget, go ahead and vote for the budget, let's see how. And that's, that's what they did. So, you know, I'm not going to stop them, I'm not going to say, you know, if you guys don't vote me, you know, you're jerks.
I'm not suggesting that you stop, I just, it would have been nice to, you know, kind of engage in some sort of dialogue, um.
I knew I, I knew I wasn't going to get anywhere, guys, on the first referendum, I just knew, I mean, you guys were convinced you'd get three percent down and I just knew that you weren't going to listen, so I'll let you go and, you know, we'll let the, or let you guys pass that, pass that budget and I
That's a text message, so people vote now, yes, keep going.
No, people were very concerned as to why I was the only one that voted no, like, why is this one guy not voting no? And I figured it's a good opportunity for them to understand my thought process and that. And there's a lot of people, as I'm sure you saw, that fully agree with you, they're like, yeah, why aren't you listening to us? Why aren't you putting forth a lower budget? Why does the council keep passing these insanely high budgets? So, that's what I did. And there's already been, like, there was a mistake with eleven o'clock, I have no control of that, it's nothing that I
That was the second text message.
Yeah, I know, there's some, there's like a system that they use, they, they have a script and the way the system like watches a text and I don't know anything because of the technical thing, but it was supposed to go out like four P M or something, it didn't hit until like eleven o'clock or whatever, whatever company it uses, I don't even know who that's, but that's what it wasn't, it wasn't all like a, I put this type of thing to try to wake everybody up.
Hey, so I want to get back to the question at hand. There's a one point five percent proposal from town manager Foley. There's a one point two percent proposal from councilor Shay, which I believe you had sent in this morning to Yulita to run some numbers so that it can be distributed to counselors if that hasn't been done already. Um, are there
Is that going on now or something?
Do, I did. Yeah, that you know me, yeah.
When did it go up?
Yes, yes, so if I can just clarify again
Uh huh.
That the request that uh council Joe proposed was uh redup, additional reduction of five hundred thousand dollars. So it brought to one point two one four, it's very, it's a long rounding percentage. So if we're going to focus on one point two percent, there's going to be a slight difference, which is I reran the numbers, but I'm going to double check, it's like nine thousand dollars that will have to be allocated. So it just, it won't say, so, so it's going to be
With the two hundred thousand dollars last month, sorry.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
Yeah, can you just forward that email to all counselors?
The original one that they sent to Joe?
Yes, because everybody has.
If if Chris and Jacob were C C, I believe, on Joe's, and so we returned it to to Chris and Jacob, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can
About how we're going to distribute it.
Yeah, crazy, crazy day, apologies.
I did, yeah.
So you check about, I guess you What's that?
I'm just glad I got this a little earlier today, thank you.
So those scenarios are run, people can look at them.
These two scenarios?
Yeah, the one point five and the one point two one, et cetera. Um, but, yes, councilor Utecheck.
So I I haven't seen it, I know. It's over here, whatever. Um, so what is the one point two, like, what is that number? Is it three hundred, one hundred, five, six, seven hundred thousand dollars? Yulita, just
The reduction, additional reduction?
Was it five hundred?
It was five hundred, with one point two percent eaten, it's going to be five hundred nine thousand three hundred twenty seven additional reduction, so it's like I said, it's nine thousand dollars.
What's the spending increase though?
Spending increase, that's for the one point two percent.
No, no, what dollar was this spending?
Oh, the spending is seven hundred sixty three thousand nine hundred ninety one dollars. Seven, well, yes, because there was, so there's a difference, yeah.
Got it. I'm sorry, the seven hundred thousand plus is total?
Yes, seven hundred sixty three thousand nine hundred ninety one dollars.
Hmm.
Um, town, B O E and uh capital increases.
And what did you say that somebody said the insurance cost was?
Or where that, I think it's nine hundred and thirty thousand.
I'm sorry.
I think it's nine hundred and thirty thousand.
That's additional.
And no, above and beyond, yeah, it's a nine hundred thirty thousand more than last year.
Right, that's what I'm talking about, so spending increase over the whole, plus a buck forty for the town, so a million seventy, so we're three hundred thousand dollars in the whole just on insurance.
Correct, and I think if I'm remembering correctly, the Board of Ed is actually covering a good portion of claims that come from town employees because they cover ninety percent as opposed to the town covers the ten percent. So they're, they're kind of paying for town employees' claims as well, which is
Yeah.
A bummer.
No, I'm just, I, I just want to understand that. Thank you, good clarification.
So so the total is seven, I'm sorry, seven hundred thousand.
So if you don't mind, I'm going to run scenario exactly one point two percent.
Hmm.
And then we can talk about it. Is that okay? Because like I said, the percentage is a little bit
Let me just clarify, councilor Shay, because you had run that scenario this morning, do you actually want to see the difference between the one point two one
It's like nine thousand dollars too.
Yes, nine, I like that.
To me, that's not
It won't change any mill rate, it won't change the mill rate, I just have to work, you know, which custom, you wait.
I think, I think
It's fine.
Yeah, I think
So I can work with it, okay.
Yeah, okay. Um, maybe because you have questions about it and maybe you could just you could just share, can we, can you share this?
I have to go downstairs.
Oh, you do, okay, she has to go downstairs to share her screen, she can do that, okay. Maybe, I, maybe, I'm just saying it could be useful to just kind of see that actually on a spreadsheet and we can also look at, I think, at the one point five at the same time to see what, if that looks like.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, do you want to say? Everybody at the table?
I think so.
Um, let's
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can you, can you, can you use this time just to talk about next year a little bit and like the impact that we
Yeah.
You've got, I want to sign fund balance, we're talking about.
Yeah, well, actually, Yulita would be really good to have here as well, um, but maybe we just take a re- re- recess, all right? So, tell Yulita this, ready?
Sure.
Yeah, we were, we were going to, to allow you the, the time to, uh, what we present for setting everything, right?
Yes, yeah.
We
Okay.
Do we need a motion?
Do I need an motion?
Let's just do one.
I think you do.
We don't, we don't
So I'll move to the recess in thirty minutes to allow town staff to provide the requested scenarios for the budget.
Okay, just a second.
Uh, yes, I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Bye.
All right, all right, re- recess. All right, we're going to call council back from the recess and I'm going to turn it over to Yulita um to walk us through the scenarios. Let's go through the one point five and the one point two that councilor Shay suggested.
Please let me know when you can see your screen.
Again, but it's
Make it as big as you can.
Okay. Okay. This one. How is visual now?
Better.
Better, okay. Um, so I hidden uh some rows and some um, some columns here just for visual from uh just the important information that needs to be shared on the screen. The column I is representing town manager's budget proposal, one point five percent increase. And row eighty five, it does include um, well, it, it, it has a reduction of two hundred thousand dollars on assigned fund balance from the budget that failed. So total of use on assigned fund balance and municipal stabilization fund is one million twenty seven thousand dollars. And right here, town operating budget is fourteen million one seventy eight four sixty five, which is one point zero six percent increase from F Y twenty five adapted budget. Education operational budget is forty four million five hundred one thousand seven hundred fifty one dollar, which is one point forty six percent increase. And total operating budget, sorry, let me hide this. The total operating budget, the row ninety seven of town and education is one point thirty six percent. Again, in a total increase of one point five percent, we also it's also in calculation of capital improvement fund increase of a hundred sixty six thousand eight hundred twenty nine dollars. That's why it, the operat, operating budget increase is one point thirty six percent, but overall town budget increase is one point five percent. What it brings us to the mill rate twenty seven point nineteen. Any questions?
Yulita, if no counselors have any questions on the numbers here, and we'll give them a second answer. This, I'd like to look at the um low, median and high mill rate numbers. If there's any questions.
Can we also look at the corresponding credits to the businesses? Because like, as we discussed, this is a dual, right? So every time you drop the mill rate, we, we were at twenty percent reduction to business, uh corporate, uh property. Uh, so we can also look at what that's doing, that would be great. Because that's twenty percent gets put back onto the homeownership.
Correct. Can you see my second screen, which just has purple and green or no?
Yeah.
Yes, perfect. Okay, so you should have the printout as well. Um, column P, Q, R and S actually represents the town presented, uh town managers presented budget and the impact uh to the tax bills. So let me just hide some of these so we can My apologies, technical difficulties. My apologies, technical difficulties. Hmm. Okay. You go. Express. Right, I think, just a second, I think I hidden something here. My apologies, I have to hide some things, and it's just, so it's, you can see it in the screen. Okay. So if we look at the low, median, and high residential. And columns P, Q, R, and S. This is the impact of the mill rate twenty seven point nineteen. And this is the difference of tax in, tax bill increases. And as the council, uh, BB said, here's the commercial of as well. So this is this portion.
Commercial is the bottom portion, like after the break in the.
Correct, yes. Row one hundred eleven to one hundred fifteen.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions here?
You can go on.
Alright, let me go back to this. So if we look at the scenario, uh, that Council Joe proposed. My mouse not listening, my apologies. Um, again, we do have here a reduction of two hundred thousand dollars on a use of unassigned fund balance, bringing us to one million twenty seven thousand. And the request was to reduce additional five hundred thousand dollars. And that was split proportionally thirty percent, seven, seventy percent between town and BOE. That would bring us to one point two fifteen percent um, spending increase from FY twenty five. Um, and again, um, row ninety two represents town's budget. Row ninety four, Board of Education budget, the total. Town and Board of Education operating budget increase is one point zero five percent. And the other increase is related to capital improvement fund projects. Which is, again, it was kind of offset by unassigned fund balance at the beginning, then we would develop the budget. But overall, increase is one point two fifteen percent. The mill rate on this scenario, it's lower, it's twenty seven point zero nine. And we, if we go back to another document where we look at the impact of the tax bills. The col- columns T, U, and V, and W represents, um, Council Joe's scenario, which is with the mill rate twenty seven zero nine. So the, the top portion, which is row one oh seven, one oh eight, one oh nine, represent residential. And below is commercial impact. And um, this is the impact on the commercial properties. Any questions?
Questions? Alright, um. Thank you, Yolita, um, for your, your essay, Council, you're done.
I thought there was another, um, page that you had the splits between the two, or is that? You have something that said seventy thirty with. In the, of the one point five and one two point two, or?
You mean this, both the three towns?
Yeah, I thought I saw her.
Um, yeah, there's, there, right there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On the bottom.
At the bottom, okay.
Yes, and these numbers represents two, so for the town and BOE in a total, it represents what was already cut, right? In the budget that failed, and additional cut with the new proposal.
Gotcha, alright. My fault, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I think, um, we got a couple proposals up on the table, I guess I'd just like to hear. Counselors thoughts upon the proposals, and any additional ideas that they might have, I'll write them down. One person go, at a time, I don't know, anybody would like to start? I want what people just want. Okay, Council, do you?
Um. I would, regardless of what budget scenario we use, if we're gonna, if we use the two hundred thousand in unassigned fund balance, um. I would, I would suggest that we go back to our original agreement that we refund the FISH study. And that we use it for the hundred and forty thousand for the Board of Education. Um, and then I would pull over the other two hundred thousand dollars as suggested. So that would be my proposal, the, that would be regardless of where, which, which scenario we end up, um, with, I am. Still looking at, um, I guess that's what I'm gonna say right now, then I'm still looking at some other things that I'm calculating, so I'll start there.
Can I just ask a clarifying question upon that?
Sure.
Uh, so we, we can avoid any, any errors.
Absolutely.
So are you s- sort of, both these scenarios put two hundred thousand dollars back for fund balance? Are you suggesting that we?
Instead of putting it back?
At, so instead of putting it back?
Well, we were, we were using four hundred before, right?
Yeah, yeah.
We were using four hundred before, now we're only using two hundred.
Yes.
Right, so.
Uh-huh.
Agree, right, with the town manager said two hundred, not the four hundred we were doing before.
Uh-huh. Yeah.
But if we're gonna use that two hundred, right?
Mm-hmm.
Allocate the sixty thousand for the FISH study, allocate the one forty for the B, the BOE, um, item that we had previously proposed.
So it wouldn't bring down, it's not being used.
It's not being used to bring down the mill rate, like the previous, uh, two hundred thousand that I proposed, it goes just back to the.
Yeah. So would it, would it be a one point, and in Brian's scenario, it wouldn't be a one point five, it would be one point five percent plus the two hundred thousand, so it'd be like one point eight or something?
Right. Not even.
I don't, I'm trying to do mental math, that, that.
Yeah, not even.
Well, basically, the situation we're in.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Uh, not even, yeah, cause it.
Yeah.
Yeah, not even.
Yeah, but I get, I think I'm, directionally, I understand what you're talking about, okay, Yolita, does that make sense to you?
Yeah.
Yes, you're absolutely correct, that would increase our spending.
Okay.
So we're not gonna be focusing anymore on one point five or one point two percent, it's gonna be additional, whatever the calculation is going to be.
But someone else would like to.
So I just have to run the different, you know, that scenario to show what that impact is.
Okay, thank you. Um. Right off, I guess, although, just, go where my thoughts are at the table. So, originally, I liked one point five idea, because it seemed like it was a hundred percent, and it would go down, and then we'd have a decent impact, but. What kind of scared you in, looking at the spreadsheet, is that the difference in the tax rates from what failed and what one point five would be are. Quite modest, the low ends, um, the increase would go. Would have been a two hundred fifty three dollar increase at a two percent, at a one point five, it's a two hundred forty five dollar increase, it's only a little difference. At a high end, it's a twenty six dollar difference between what failed and what a one point five is. So. I feel, we were in a very similar situation last year on the. As we were preparing for the third referendum, where it failed by about fifty two percent, and then, uh, oh, we can cut. Sixty, seventy thousand dollars, and it will pass, and then it failed again, so I. I, I am nervous about that, I think we gotta make a bit more of a, of a impact, um, this time, so I'm. I'm leaning more towards the one point two scenario, um, I do think it's good that we put fund balance back, um. If, uh, you have questions on that, we do have area online to, to add, to answer them. Um, that being said, you know, we'll let it talk, more to, to see if there's a compromise there. Um, but I do think if we're not. Really moving the, the needle on what the tax increase is gonna be for our residents, they were gonna be in the same spot that we were last time. Uh, that's really the, only true metric to really look at in a year like this, when the mill rate fell, the taxes are up, and the spending increases small, so you can't use those as guides. Anymore, you know, um, so we gotta look at those numbers. So anyway, not a proposal to put out, but that's just kind of my thoughts upon between the two that we're currently looking at.
Else. Just for clarification, how, only the fund, the fund balance can like go to revenue, right, so if you're using it, that just goes up into your revenue, so how? I think this sixty and the one forty. Are you, you're sort of adding additional expense to offset, or to? That's what then be. Offset by this revenue, additional two hundred thousand.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you lead that, answer that question, since.
Because you can't, you can't reduce your expenses by the fund balance.
We, we, this came out of an original, the original proposal that we had during our first discussion, and it carried through to the second. Meeting that we had, um, so, I'm gonna. Because there was, there was two hundred thousand for the unassigned fund balance, that was, that was requested to be used toward the FISH study, and then toward the, the school, um, expense, it was a. I think it was capital project, um, so that would, so Yolita to clarify, right? That would, that would be. Added in, but it would be considered an expense, correct?
Correct, you would add to expense two hundred, and you would add to revenue two hundred.
Right, so it adds to, right, adds to revenue, and then it adds to expense, the other way we were doing it would only have added to revenue.
Right.
If, when we were offsetting the tax rate, right, would we use the, when we proposed to use the other two hundred thousand? So that would only be added to revenue, so that, I'm gonna go on a little bit of a limb here, but if we're adding only to revenue, it would have the same effect as. Cutting another two hundred thousand dollars, because if we're on the tax rate, right, because you're, you're saying I'm gonna have that revenue, but we're not doing that anymore, so it's a moot point.
Well, just to add to revenue, brings your mill rate down.
Right.
But doesn't adjust your expenses anyway, so it sounds like you wanna add another two hundred expense.
Correct, that's gonna be increased the spending.
Use the two hundred thousand on assigned fund balance, I'm suggesting we use it in a way that we had originally intended to use.
So, I think you can do that, without increasing, without increasing the expense, by just simply stating that. Uh, you cannot cut the FISH study. For the hundred forty, um, in, in the board of that's capital project.
No, because that doesn't refund, that doesn't use those, so in one, in one case, that, that provides funding for that, right? That just says, you can't, you can't cut that, so you have to take, you have to. But I'm gonna use FISH as an example, cause it's a easy number, you can't cut the sixty from the FISH, which means you have to cut the sixty from something else, right? Right, this is, we're gonna fund the FISH study, so you don't have to cut sixty from something else, keep, keep that efficient.
But the two hundred is already, the two hundred fund balance is already sitting in Brian's budget. He took out two hundred. But the two hundred, the other two hundred is still in his budget.
But it's only added as a, as a, as a tax reduction, correct, Yolita?
Correct, the two hundred that we added, it's just, it affects the tax reduction.
It's not going into, basically, it's just, it's like it's if somebody walked in and gave us a two hundred thousand dollar check, an extra income, right?
Right.
That's what it's doing.
Right. But, so, I guess I'm still confused, so we're not, I'm gonna use of your two hundred thousand dollars. Yeah, so that's fine, so, I mean, but it's not, to me, it's not necessarily increasing the expense. Because you're just simply stating that I want that two hundred thousand to be used toward the FISH study, plus the board event. That basically is sitting in this one and a half percent increase, I don't think you have to increase the spend.
That's, I'm gonna, you'll let you lead against our.
Yeah, I think it will be easier to see it up on a chart, um, when she does prepare it, but.
Yeah.
Maybe just another way to put it, like, let's say, say the argument of one point five, with the two hundred thousand used in a way that Council BB wants it to be. The mill rate would have to go up a point seven or one point. Go. Is that accurate?
Oh, why has?
Yes.
Simply state that.
Because I think the, if I understand correctly, the purpose is we cutting expenses, right? But we wanna give back that a hundred forty and sixty thousand, right? Or we don't cut, or we don't cut that much expenses, then we don't have to give any money, you know, what, a hundred forty and sixty.
So let me ask you, Rita, because, I, I can't say for certain, but I at least think that I was thinking like Council Shane was. Last meeting about this. It seems to me that we should be, hypothetically, if we were to use the money from the unassigned fund balance, it's, we're saving it in our rainy day fund. And we wanted to apply it to sixty thousand dollars for FISH, and a hundred and forty thousand dollars for the board of events, capital project, whatever. We should just be able to do that, but I think that's, that was not, we were not able to do that, right? That's what came out of our last meeting, and that's because you, that would have put us above the two percent that we were watching to. I don't know that I understand why that's the case, um. Yeah, I guess I don't understand why that's the case.
Okay, so I have to do a show, to show it to you how it works, because I think that's where we, we. When we assign something for specific purpose, we need to have a separate, like a supplemental, um. Uh, I have to show you how it works, because it's not just, uh. It's not just, whatever we're talking, I think that's a confusing, if I show you how it works, it's gonna be more visual.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, so if you give me some time, I don't know if we can take another break. And.
What do we wanna keep talking, uh, while Yolita works, do we wanna?
Let me just think here, um, did anybody else have a scenario that they wanted to get to Yolita to talk for? I don't see, see anything, so we've given another opportunity to run, run numbers, um. Just, just to clarify, did you wanna see the two hundred thousand add in for both the one point five and the one point two one?
Yes, please.
Okay, so it's two scenarios. Okay.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, um.
Joe, you look.
It, well, it just seems like we're increasing expenses, I didn't, I didn't know if that was intent. Seems like we just wanna make sure that that two hundred is used for something specific, without necessarily increasing expenses.
That we can't use it. That we're increasing expenses. According to what Yolita told us last time, cause I, we, we had this extensive back and forth.
Yeah.
And it was me in your position right now, saying, I don't guess why this is the case, until she put it out in the spreadsheet.
My thing, that's fine, yeah. But you can, I mean, as a, as part of our, uh, as part of our motion, we can just motion that that two hundred is to use for the FISH study.
This is, uh.
That's what we tried, and we went down that, that's where we.
That's what we, that's what we did.
But it, but not, we're, we're trying to add an expense, right?
That's, that's, that's exactly what we motioned, or what we thought we motioned.
It's, it's, it's kind of like, you can either use it to increase expenses, or you use it to cut the mill rate.
No, well, it's since and whether, there's no doubt about that, so you can't, you can't take the two hundred thousand and move it down into the P and L, not down into the expense section of P and L. It stays in rep. So that is just a question of.
Yeah, when you say.
That's just questionable, okay, I want that money, you know, I want that money to be used for these things, which should already be in my expense buckets.
I think it's probably the. The more technically correct way toward it, if, if I may, would be, I want to increase spending by a hundred forty thousand, or maybe a sixty thousand on the town side. But I want to also use additional two hundred thousand.
From the fund balance.
Fund balance, so you separate it into two sides, a revenue. Fund balance, so you separate it into two sides, a revenue side and expense side, so once you start saying, you know, and I. That everybody does this, you know, I wanna use a two hundred for X, then it starts to, now you're like inherently crossing the line between expense to revenue.
And we need to be very explicit about this, because we, yes.
I still don't see the difference, since you're saying they wanna add. They wanna add another two hundred thousand dollars of expense, right? They still don't.
Yes, I think that's a yeah, it's gonna be paid for, I'm not assigned.
Okay, but your assigned fund balance is already sitting in the revenue section of this budget. It's not like we have to add it, it's already there. So the only thing you're stating is that we wanna add another two hundred thousand dollars to the expense, which doesn't make any sense.
That 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 will be the logical way to interpret it.
So, yeah, another easy way to say it, let's reduce the P and L by two hundred thousand and then. That reduces our expense and then let's add back in the FISH study and the board of the capital improvement project and we're right back to the one and a half percent.
I think we're gonna take advisement on how on how it works, on how to work this.
I.
I get what you're saying.
With you. A lot of logic, it's just like you shouldn't have to add something, that's not fair.
Right, because the point at least in this scenario, right, is to fund these things. And we're not funding them with tax rate money, right, like that's like we're not.
Yeah.
But I yeah, so I don't I don't, yeah, so I could, yeah, I was, I am where you are, except that. Yolita, that's not right, so I don't know why.
And so so.
Need to just need to clarify.
And she did, right, and and I think that the you were exactly right, um. Chair, that that the way that we word this is important to make the intention particularly clear, so that we. Don't have a redux of our previous scenario, so I think that's something we can work out.
Yeah, yeah, I think it'll be more clear when it's on an Excel spreadsheet.
I just need, yeah, I just, I don't expect to see the percent increase though.
Percent increase for spending, right?
Don't think that should happen, I don't understand why that should happen. Because. If you're saying we're gonna add two hundred thousand, then I'm saying, fine, take two hundred thousand from somewhere else and we're back at our one and a half percent.
So that would be if you if you were using it for a. A tax relief purpose, that's essentially what you'd be doing, because you'd be saying, well, I keep spending at one point. Five. But we use two hundred thousand dollars as fund balance or whatever, um which means I'm only raising. A one point. One percent spending increase from property taxes, I'm using filling in the fund balance for the balance. Does that make sense?
No, because our fund balance is doing exactly that, it's reducing the mill rate but not adjusting the.
I think it'd be easier with the spreadsheet, we we was, it's a.
We use consistent, I don't know whether we use two hundred or four hundred thousand dollars, the only thing that does is reduce the mill rate.
No, that's not true.
Yeah. It's a revenue only adjustment.
That's not what that's. That's what I thought, that's not what the person with the advanced degree in finance or in helping us out, this says, so.
Yeah, we'll we'll.
So.
We'll get there.
So we can, yes, so we need to look at that, because the wording of this and the designation of this matters a lot, right, and how we. Yeah, so.
Yeah, whatever. Um I'll entertain a motion, you assess, I can tell. Get with this ready.
Yeah, so so we're not wasting a lot of time, is there any discussion that we wanna have while we have theory on the call that? If you wanna talk about can you fund balance or what impact? That has on on things, especially going into next year.
Have you let it here for that, though?
What's that?
I would like.
Yeah, you have to be present for that, I think.
Yeah.
Did you make a motion?
I would, I didn't make a motion, yes.
Okay, is your second?
I'm second.
Any discussion on favor?
I.
I'm.
All right, I'm gonna call the council meeting back to order. Um I'll turn it over to Yolita to walk us through what she prepared.
Let me know when you can see my screen.
Yeah.
Yep, you can see it, little small, though.
So this on the screen, you see town managers' um proposed uh scenario. Which is column N, it's an original proposed scenario. Column I, K, and L, it splits uh two hundred thousand dollars. From an assigned fund balance use in a separate for the specific use of uh sixty K and a hundred forty K. In expenditures, and what it does. The budget, the expenditures and revenues, when we do that, it brings um the overall spending to one point nineteen percent. And then the column L, it's adding back, right, to the total um increase. Of the budget is one point five, and I think that's what um Council Merly was asking for. Basically, just retake two hundred. Assigned to the specific purpose. And do not increase the spending. Is that correct?
I think that's what the, I think that scenario, that's the scenario that we talked about. Right, so we're, yes, we add, when you, when you left. When we were sitting here at the table, you asked if this is what we wanted to see, because we already have the other scenario that you applied.
Which is, yes, adding additional two hundred K with increased spending. And would change the mill rate and all that.
Right.
Different. So in this case, um. Again, um this, the column I represents basically what town and. BOE needs to come up as a cut. And then two hundred K of an assigned fund balance will assign for that purpose to be total of the budget. It would not change the cuts. Right, what I what we were presenting, it would be the same cuts for the town and BOE. At the end of the day. Any questions?
Questions, councilors, you need a minute to digest it.
Yeah, I think I understand what. I think I see the difference here.
I think that's where last time we didn't do this. And it just for the visual to understand how much. Each each side needs to cut and what is the end of result of the budget.
So the spending increase for this scenario is still one point five percent.
Correct, that's what we, that's what I was asked to do.
And the mill rate is?
Twenty seven nineteen.
And that's the same as the town manager's deposit.
Correct. Because we reduced the revenue and we reduced expenditures.
That increase to will be the allocation of that fund. The reduction for like.
Yes. So there is a difference sixty-four million four twenty nine 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 twenty-nine and sixty-four. Six twenty-nine twenty-nine.
So there would be no change to tax. Rate on this budget, it would be the same.
It would be the same one we discussed early.
The way that this is allocated here versus that's.
You wanna go on to the second one?
Sure. And here is, uh can you see, should I enlarge it? So column T is the original. Proposal. And we have column M QR, column M. So I worked backwards, right, to reduce the other financial sources by two hundred thousand dollars of an assigned fund balance and I reduced. Town operational budget and BOE budget. And then add it back. For the total, not to increase the spending by one point twenty-one percent, and this is rounding again. So again, at the end of the day, it would be the same reduction for the town and BOE that we discussed earlier. At the scenario.
It's essentially, you're just, you're allocating fund balance to specific parts of the budget, but we're not.
Correct, yep.
I think I got it. Any questions from councilors? Here, go ahead, councilor Vivi.
All right, and what is the? In line one oh eight, one oh six on the town manager's budget and one oh eight. On the uh council Joe budget, what if you have a point nine oh one percent, you have a one point one nine percent in green box?
Yes, so. Yep.
What that is?
Sure, so on the town manager's budget. Then we, then I worked backwards, right, to reduce the revenue by two hundred K and reduce expenditures, that's the overall. Budget increase compared to FY twenty-five adopted budget.
Well, I thought that over, so I thought the overall increase was one point five.
Correct, that's right there, that's the total, right? So we have to add it back, because you, the request was to specifically assign two hundred thousand dollars. For si- sixty and a hundred forty, so when we added back, the overall then. Overall budget is one point five.
And I'm sorry, what was the one point one nine?
One point one nine is the overall budget, then we reduce revenues and expenditures by two hundred thousand dollars. So we work backwards.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, though, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions from councilors? I think we have a lot of scenarios. To. Ponder, um. I think this time, if there is a counselor who'd like to. Anybody likes to make a motion um for one of these scenarios, I think that would be appropriate, um. So that we can be discussing perhaps where a majority of us can agree to.
I'll make a motion to. To uh. To increase the budget by the one point two percent, taking into account Merly's uh adjustment for the fund balance.
Right, Council Chase made a motion to um adopt uh same counselor. These. Scenario, using a one point two one, approximately one point two one percent, um is there a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, so that motion's been made and seconded, so now we'll go into discussions, is there any discussion on that motion?
I have a question for the town manager. Um so with what we with what we did here, right, which goes back to our original request, as far as how to divide it this two hundred thousand. Is that is is that sixty thousand that we're designating for that use, is that in encumbering you in a way, given? Is that encumbering you in a way that you would rather not be encumbered?
I have no preference at this point, you know, if that, I will spend that sixty thousand on on uh safety, be it fire or EMS. Is that what you're asking?
That's what I'm asking.
Yes.
Um we need to amend, because we have to determine an allocation. Where that town council similar to what we did for the last.
I I think you probably. I think the way it can work, you can um. Mend your motion, but then I think Council Yudichak needs to agree with the amendment to that motion.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe maybe this, well.
Still, maybe before I amend, even, should we have a discussion about what we consider a reasonable allocation? The last one we did seven thirty, we wanna stick with that, we're.
Can I just make clear, uh we're talking about the spreadsheet that has its its council Joe. And then its use of fund balance, and so like the, for example, line one oh eight is a point nine zero one percent.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I can jump in, I mean, I think seventy thirty will not perfectly proportionate as the amount I would. Generally be able to agree to, that's reasonably fair.
Can some, um I don't know if it's Yolita, so what would the the um? Bottom line cuts be for the town or yeah cuts be for the town and the board of ed, even though I understand that it's still.
Can I introduct and interject?
Yes, I'm agreeing.
So what I would like to do, I would like, like I said, there is a rounding, right, nine thousand dollars, so I wanna really specify the dollar amount, redo it like, you know. And say this is exactly the dollar amount for BOE, it's exactly the dollar amount for town, so we're all on the same page. So I don't know at what point I can do that.
Well. This was, uh I think we stuck with a pretty round number, it was like a five hundred thousand dollar reduction from from the failed referendum, correct?
Correct.
If we just do a simple seventy thirty split, we're reducing. The board of ed by seventy percent of five hundred and the town council other. The town by thirty percent of five hundred thousand, so that gives us a split, and then we've been tripped the nine hundred thou- nine nine thousand time after that.
Because I believe we still need to uh make a motion of a vote on the specific dollar amount and increase and the mill rate and, you know, the question. So we need to specific those as well.
Yeah, I would suggest that we use this discussion time to come up with those precise amounts and then.
Okay.
Your motion accordingly with specific dollar amounts, provided Council Yudichak agrees, um and then. That way, there's no ambiguity as to what the motion actually is. Yeah. Uh Yolita, can you confirm that five hundred thousand is a um full reduction, that's the correct number?
Yeah, let me do the, uh let me rerun that scenario, put exactly numbers and I'll get back to you.
So we're on a break.
I'm texting, I don't know.
Okay.
It's, yeah, it's, yeah, it's not a whole scenario, it's just
We just started walking on floors?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can? We can.
Let's just wait.
Yeah, let's just wait.
Well, I think, or do?
Well, I'm done, yeah.
Wait, how to say?
Okay, so I'm ready, um.
Yeah.
So my question, do we need the reduction dollar amount from um the FY, the, the budget that failed? Additional or total, what the numbers do we need? For the Board of Education in town?
We, we just want the difference, right? We don't want
Yeah, let's talk.
Touch the
I think we've been talking in terms of difference from the pre failed referendum, so let's, let's just use those numbers.
So the total um one point two percent increase is the total uh budget, it's sixty-four million four hundred twenty-nine, nine thirty-one, which is brings us for additional reduction on the town sa- side of one fifty-two, one hundred fifty-two thousand seven hundred ninety-seven dollars. And on the BOE side, three hundred fifty-six thousand five hundred thirty dollars.
Three five, so last three digits?
Five, three, zero.
Thank you.
Total of five hundred nine thousand three hundred twenty-seven dollars.
One five two seven nine seven?
Five zero nine, three two seven.
And then can you please also just um reiterate the, the total dollar increase? And then the municipal increase and the BME increase?
Sure, so the town increase from FY twenty-five adopted budget is ninety-one thousand seven hundred fifty-nine dollars. And Board of Education is five hundred five thousand four hundred three dollars.
And then, so the total would be the combination of two?
And if there, there is additional capital improvement fund, that it's also an increase of one hundred sixty-six thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars that have not changed.
Okay.
We look to, what was the town increase again?
The town increased ninety-one thousand seven hundred fifty-nine dollars. So the total increase, seven hundred sixty-three thousand nine hundred ninety-one dollar.
Yes, seven hundred fifty-three.
Seven hundred fifty-three, nine nine nine?
Sixty-three, seven sixty.
Yeah, can you, I'm sorry, can you just clarify the, the total expenditures again?
The total expenditures?
No, sixty-four millions.
Yep, sixty-four million four hundred twenty-nine thousand nine hundred thirty-one.
Okay, thank you.
It's one point two percent increase.
Um, counselor Shane, did you want to try to amend your motion um specifically or?
So, I, can we just amend it to say uh amend it to say that the reduc- the town reductions of one fifty-two, seven ninety-seven where there's three fifty-six, five thirty from previous budget? Previous failed budget, or do I have to say increase, what is that increase?
I'll make sure that it's all crystal clear, um, Lisa, how are we capturing the motion right now?
Well, we just had amend the motion to the town reduction of that amount in the BME from the previous failed budget, and that's when he asked you the question.
I'm thinking open and, and put it here, but maybe you write this down and so it's clear and you can amend your motion to something that's a written statement that addresses every part of this, I can help wrap something really.
Sure, we, we just based it off of the uh
Yes, yeah, so I've been, um yeah, I want to be, yeah.
Do I have to cancel the original motion?
It's a, I'm going to, I just say I'd like to amend and maybe amending, I'd like to clarify and amend my original motion and read that out for the next council unit check agrees.
Okay, fine. Uh I'd like to amend my original motion to include the following motion. Adopt counselor BB's amended version of counselor Shay's proposal, specifically a seven hundred sixty-three thousand nine hundred ninety-one dollar total spending increase, which is a five hundred nine thousand three hundred twenty-seven dollar reduction from the most recent budget proposal that failed referendum, provided that one hundred fifty-two thousand seven ninety-seven is reduced from the town from the failed budget referendum, and three hundred fifty-six thousand five hundred thirty dollars is reduced from Board of Education failed budget referendum, and the fund balances applied as outlined in column Q of the worksheet. Like through a column Qs?
And I was gonna say, I wanna add those.
I was trying to see there's a name for this spreadsheet, but they all look like they're, I mean, I don't know if there is, so.
So can I interject for a moment? Okay, so the, the reductions town and BOE, we talking after adding those sixty and a hundred forty?
Say that again?
I co- did I confuse everyone now? So the reduction that is this, so the total reduction, right, to reach one point two percent? But in order to get to talk about that two hundred and assigned fund balance, right? The town, the town and BOE need to reduce sixty and a hundred forty K additional. So because if we just say that reduction then plus two hundred, that sounds like we adding on the top. Yeah, I think Joe, you understand what I'm trying. That was the confusion with the prior res- with the prior motion, with the, that, I don't know how we wanna clarify this, that's not additional two hundred, this is within that.
Maybe it might be easier to do the increase than to increase. Maybe, please let me just do increase of ninety-one seventy-nine to the town, five hundred five four three two percent increase in the prior's budget, something that's simple.
We'd have to specify what share goes to BOE and council from the increase, right?
Correct.
That would be
That would be part of the motion, so then, then some goes to capital, one sixty-six has to go to capital for a total spending increase of seven sixty-three nine ninety.
Yes, maybe we just read it. Maybe this can be included in the minutes or something to make it clear. This is, this is the one, right? You would read off what the expenditure number and the board of ed.
Is this, so if we're, we're getting into terms details, this, when does this get, when does this get finalized?
Tonight, tonight, yeah.
But it's not the
It's the second.
It's the second part of the whole thing, so really the only thing I have to do is make a motion to uh adopt a budget increase of one point two percent, which equals seven sixty-one, with ninety-one seventy-nine, I'll keep it.
Yeah, well, I think, sorry, five oh five. I think we do need to be a little bit more specific, cause that motion doesn't tell anything about how the money needs to be allocated.
Uh, this motion.
Yeah, but
Or that's, that's a resolution.
Yeah.
All right, that's what I can say, that the increase, the one point two percent increase is allocated as follows.
Hmm.
So the town hits this um, and for total, you know, total uh expense of sixty-four, four twenty-nine, ball of bar, and then you, you pass the resolution after that. Okay, is that sound clear?
Yeah, maybe just, I know, then withdraw my motion and just give the motion rather than try to amend that motion.
I think it's always
It's okay with withdrawing the motion?
Yep.
Yeah, so start from scratch, okay. So you withdrawing your motion?
We're withdrawing my motion.
All right, okay. Yes, maybe just read that, how, could they maybe just?
And then, then we'll do the resolution after we fill this in, right? And then you pass the resolution, if this even passed, I can
And at least have, so figure it out. Okay. All right, just
Okay, so I'm gonna make a new motion unless, unless we have a loss, I want to make a motion. I make a new motion to to uh, for a one percent, one point two percent increase adopting counselor BB's amended version of counselor Shay's proposal, which calls for a increase to the town of ninety-one seven fifty-nine, increase to the Board of Education of five oh five four three, increase to the capital account of one sixty-six eight twenty-nine for a total increase of seven sixty-three ninety, nine ninety-one for a total budget of sixty-four thousand four twenty-nine nine thirty.
So second to that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Thank the motion to me and seconded, is there any discussion on that motion?
Yeah, one we could
Yes.
Um, so we'll just make sure our math is straightened, someone, I'm gonna try to so we're talking point one of mil in the difference between the one point five percent and the one point two percent. And that isn't a lot when it comes to the effect on the average house assessment, but it reflects hundred eighty-one thousand six hundred seventy-one dollars. And if we're splitting seventy thirty, then then come to the municipal side and then come to the early side, so it's something that is tangible, so it's really, really tangible, um, a really tangible effect on those two bodies. For a house that, that, uh, that is appraised at, let's say, four hundred twenty-eight thousand and is assessed at three hundred thousand, the difference in taxes is thirty dollars.
A year?
A year. To go from that twenty-seven point one nine to twenty-seven point oh nine. And that's at a if I tried to pick up, again, sort of median range there, um, some of us are seeing much just, so there, but I'm gonna repeat this. When I first got the, when we were first looking at, at what we were doing with the three percent, all of that stuff, I was talking nineteen percent increase for my house. So I am one of the people who is seeing one of the largest, and I, and I spreadsheeted a hundred and some houses and I was in the town one percent, so I, I get it, I have a lot of skin in the game. Um, that said, and I want, you know, that, that this is affecting me personally, but what we're doing is for this, it's thirty bucks. And I think we can do we can return something to both BOE and municipal side for the thirty bucks.
Counselor BB, yeah. Um, anybody else?
Just a comment on that, and and the op- the optics that we see is that if you look at Brian's budget compared to the failed budget, the taxpayer is gonna see that, and what else did you, which is from the value, it worked?
I picked an appraised value, or sorry, assessed value of three hundred, which back, which back calculated to four twenty-eight.
Oh, okay, so I was looking at the worksheet that, that, that uh
Right, which back calculated, so I just want to, in real dollars, not percentages, but in real dollars.
Not, but when they look at what the impact of of manager's budget is, so it's, so let's just say the middle of the road here on the market value, they're just gonna see a reduction of sixteen dollars, which to them all you did was reduce, your revised budget just reduced my tax if I allows it sixteen bucks, they're gonna wanna see
But we're only talking thirty dollars, so we're still voting on that. And we're word, we're talking about like a, like a feeling rather than what we could do, what, what Brian could do with fifty-four grand and what the BME could do with one hundred twenty-seven.
But, but my, but the difference between Brian's and my budget, so that same house, they're seeing a, they're seeing a reduction of sixteen dollars in Brian's budget. My budget is just a reduction of fifty-six, so in their mind, that's, that's a more significant adjustment that, um, that they're expecting to see, that, that the town is going to reduce That uh that they're expecting to see, that the, that the town is going to reduce the budget by.
Just to add some.
Wait, we're still talking, okay, so you're, you picked a different median number, you're picking forty dollars, I'm picking thirty dollars.
Um, no, I'm picking, I'm thinking of picking.
Are you, we're talking percentages or you're talking about dollars?
No, actual dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, they see that, I'm.
I'm, I'm, I'm comparing the, I'm comparing the twenty seven point one nine mill rate to the twenty seven point oh nine.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing too.
Yeah.
But the twenty seven, you know, twenty seven oh one nine shows very little reduction compared to the budget referendum failed. So when, you know, the voters will look at this, and see all you did was use my tax.
So I think that's where it is incumbent on on us to explain to the voters. Why, that there's really very, very, very in a median situation, that's where, that's where framing matters, that's where context matters to say. We can get this much. Yes, it's thirty dollars a year more for like an average person, for somebody with an expensive house. It'd be more than that, for some of us whose property values increased way of a lot, but you know, I understand why I'm taking an average. But I think that context really matters, right? The framing of that matters. The, we're doing this, and I, and I understand that it might feel good to look at this and say, whoa, one point two percent, but in reality, what would, if we can restore this. It's like, it's like for a, an unassessed value of thirty hundred thousand dollars, it's thirty dollars a year. And, and I, can we? I mean. I'm, I'm, I don't need to extrapolate on what I, why I think that's really important right this minute, but um, if the other councillors have something that you wanna say. Um, but I think that framing, that context is important. I mean, I think that, alright, so I guess I'm gonna go do this, so I think that we, I would love for us to, I, if we, if we talk about this as a, as a citizen, I would love to have. I guess a preliminary, I, we do this, we do this and it never seems to work, cause people never seem to have, show to have these conversations, but like, what do people want? The community to look like, right? What do they want the education system to look like, what? What is, what is the desired outcome here, because if inflation continues to be the average of like the two and a half to three percent a year, which is kind of what it is. And we keep funding things at a one point two percent a year. We are not going to have a viable. We are going to just wholesale shut things, shut certain things down, so what are, what do we really want to shut down? But we need to have that conversation, if, if we're gonna keep. If, if. As you said, people are not, if they, this is what they want, what are we going to shut down and what are we going to eliminate? Permanently, permanently. Um, and I, and I want to say here, like, we were talking about history, right? My family came here as poor German farmers in the eighteen hundreds. Because they didn't wanna live under Ken, and they had to get a release from the Ken to come here, and the first thing that they did, as people that worked with their bare hands, was. Provide for themselves and build a school, because where they came from. Education was for the wealthy and the elite, and here. And I had, my grand, my father's parents had four boys in the middle of depression. I'm reaching, I'm, you know, wage, fuel was rationed, food was rationed, all kinds of stuff was rationed, and, and they never earned the above, they were, they were basically working class people, they were, they. They did this so that their own kids could become middle class, because that education is the cornerstone of the democratic society today. Gives, public education gives people the ability to move, and we certainly have to improve upon this. Into, into, and stay in the middle, into the middle class, and I'm thinking for thirty bucks a year, it's worth it. And I think that framing is really important.
Okay, or, yeah, I'll, I'll just say, you know. So, budget gets out of council, obviously all. Work to continue to try to get it to pass, I think it last time, try to definitely frame it up in that way, um. I'm just looking. Back to history, you know, and keep going back to refer, we had a, the failed hundred forty votes or so last time, and. Make that large a redu- number of reduction, and we're back here again. Um, I, I think, you know, if you look at the, the budget that failed versus what one point two we give you. You know, you're, you're close to a hundred dollars among the higher income, there's probably more against it, that we're most, uh, saying, and you're down to the low. I'm a four percent increase, um, so I think, you know. We are in a tough spot because we're trying to figure out what people will want, we don't know exactly what we want, but I think, I think details like that do matter. Um. To try to get something, something through. Um, but. We're in a very, a very rough spot, this isn't the budget I would have put out if we did not have a revaluation. It'd have been higher, but that's kind of where we are right now. But. That's all my counsel, man.
Uh, yeah, I'll just say, um, I, I can't support this much of additional cut to the board of ed and really quite technically the town, um. I still think that use of our assigned fund balance, um, is not, it's not being utilized in the way that I think it should be to actually. Um, help ameliorate some of these cuts, so, um. I just think that would do uh too much harm, and we have such a large rainy day fund that we could uh maybe use more strategically, so.
I would agree with councillor Moran, I think that. The impact it has on the whole, the town and the board of ed is significant compared to the relief that we're giving. Um, people in the town, I think if we did a better job educating, how little this will have an effect on, on. The overall dollar amount that's coming out of the pocket compared to what is gonna happen to, on both the town side and the board of ed side, it's. When you look at the numbers side by side, you see how, how little this is gonna give for people and we, and in, in. That just boils down to the fact that this reevaluation is really making an impact, however, we can't. Just continue cutting hundreds of thousands of dollars from the board of ed and from the town, just because this is what we think they want, I mean, it really is not gonna make much of an impact. To their wallet, but it's going to make a hell of an impact to, you know, the people that work here in town, and. You know, right now, there isn't any concrete, um, scenario as far as what it's gonna do on the town side and what's gonna do on the board of ed side, but, um. Gotta have some impact, and if not losing people, it's going to make people's jobs more difficult, um, cause something's gonna be cut. So at, at some point, it's gotta be more about education. And being all on the same page than just continue to, to flee the town dry for a few dollars in someone's pocket.
Other. Comments upon this proposal?
Comment, um, like, what you guys are all saying, hundred percent, but I feel like. You know, between Jacob's letter, my letter, it's the Democrats putting out. Even some people might like, not like it, it's the truth, for the matter, it both were, um. And I don't know, and maybe it is a number thing, I don't, I have no idea, I haven't, I don't. I don't even know what the answer is, because. You know, you're talking about the one point five percent merely versus the one point two?
Yeah, the one point five versus the one point two is a, is a change in, is a tenth of the mill rate change.
Yeah. Now, Joe, what do you?
And the, and the average, and the average, the, the, so, so framing this is like, okay, the, the difference between that is, is. It's. It's the difference between keeping certain departments open and closing entirely, right? And so this doesn't sound like, it's, it's not a lot, it's not a, it's not a big thing, and it's not, if you're looking at like whether we're taking, and I've. Whether we're taking. I'm sorry, I lost the correct spreadsheet, whether we're taking, what I use, and I use three hundred, cause it was an easy thing for me to multiply frankly, and it. It bumps up to four hundred twenty eight, and so it's a reasonable middle of the road talent house based on, on what we saw, um. And if the impact of that is, you know, thirty dollars a year, I think it's important to say, this has, this could have a, a, a fairly significant impact. In trying to keep, keep certain services over on this side for thirty bucks a year on this side. For that tenth of a million, that's, that's what I'm trying to say, and that's why I think that framing matters.
Yeah, no, I understand, I feel like that's was a lot of our course in truth, and it wasn't lies, and we're making it up, and. You know, trying to scare tactic to everybody, it's, it's the truth. So we're nobody's fault, we're all in it together, and I, I don't, I really feel like we need Joe's vote to make this pass. Say it. So Joe, I mean, what do you think, if it's just a twenty two dollar difference, it's the twenty two dollar difference, cause that could be a lot, but.
No, I, I understand the mindset that, you know, everybody can afford another twenty two dollars, but the mindset of the people in this town is, how much more are you gonna keep nickel and diming me to death? When I'm getting hit with a huge tax increase, and you still can't even give me a lousy thirty dollars, because you think it's more important to you than it is to me? That's the mindset you're dealing with, you're not dealing with it, you can afford more money, you can pay us more money, that, they're fed up with it, so I don't think a one point five is gonna pass. I'm, I'm concerned, you heard, you heard me before, I think two or three runs ago saying, I think you, you gotta need one. But, so I think one point two is going to be a struggle, because people are just, they're done. They don't listen to. And you guys aren't.
I don't think that's not, I don't think that's true, Joe, we are listening, we're doing every, a lot of, being very creative, taking a lot of risks on this budget, and. We all are actually really working hard together, so.
No, I agree, I mean, nobody wins in this situation, I, I give you that, I'm not happy about it, nobody's happy about it, nobody wins, but. Um, you know, the, the constant discussion is here is, you know, how much do we have to cut, how much do we have to cut, how much do we have to cut, without thinking how much everyone in this town has to cut out of their own lives? We're all getting hit hard. We're in a tough, tough year. And, and you go from two percent to one point five, there are a lot of people out there that are still pretty pissed. We just can't be gonna hear that one point five. We're gonna be back here for a run around.
I'll just add, I mean, I think this is the broader picture, right? Um, you know, it's not just a tax increase, it's, you know, had bad inflation over the past several years, even though it slowed down a little bit, it's. Not like prices are gonna go down, um, you know, we've had a huge high rate utility bills, um.
Joe decided to decrease in June by thirteen percent?
Yeah, that's, that's good news, yeah, but then, um, you know, potential tariff trade war, you know, raising prices for common goods, you know.
I just tried to ask you that.
Comedy doesn't look at it as, as good as it could be, people are, are, I bring all this up into the map when they, when they look at the tax.
So I would, I would, that's why framing matters, that's why context matters, right? So, so I understand that's, that's in the background, right? But that's in the background intentionally, the tariff stuff, cutting education, you know, we have a, we have a, we have a, we have a native daughter who's. Saying I'm gonna cut education, which means special education, which means there's already towns in the nation that are basically saying, cutting our special education program, right? Like, we're gonna just abandon that. That's intentional, cutting food aid for people, for seniors, that's intentional, but, you know, creating. Adding taxes to people in the form of tariffs, that's intentional, that creates a manufactured crisis. So that people feel even more insecure, so they come back to their communities, and we sit here squabbling with each other over thirty dollars. So we can blame each other, and we can have people say, kids are spoiled, seniors, you know, seniors need to, you know, do whatever they need to do, and we. So there's a, again, a multi-year effort to try to. Push, push back and eliminate some of this, because we shouldn't be living on the ma- in a manufactured crisis. A manufactured financial crisis that is making this all worse, can't be the backstory for how we decide to operate our community, because it will never end, and we will cannibalize ourselves. To the point of where we won't be functioning, and that's the point, so I need, I want us as a community to look at each other and reject that, and say. Not nickel and diming you, a one and a half percent increase. Like, this is even cover, cover the cost of insurance, and Aetna's gonna get what Aetna's gonna get. Exxon's gonna get what Exxon's gonna get, we all know this, right? We know this, and cost of living increases, you know, two percent a year, three percent a year, that's average, that's what happens. That's not us nickel and diming people, that is how our capitalistic economy works. Alright, right? You get a company that doesn't see that increase every year, and Wall Street punishes them, and then we come back to our community and say. We can't, that, that's not acceptable here, so we just say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna, we'll fund it at one point two or one point five or whatever, but we're still not covering even expenses. And if you did that in your home budget, like, you just start selling stuff off. And if you did it over ten or twelve years. Now you are where we are, so I'm, I'm. My point is, I understand how much people are hurting, because my. Potential taxing increase took my breath away, ready, um, and. But when I, when I looked at this, and I, I wish we could have deferred it, we can, or we didn't, but. At, at some point, I, I guess, for my own purposes, it gets to a point where. Just for what I'm, like it. My conscience will, will only let me go so far.
Can I make a motion to call the questions, so we're on a one point two percent, can we just, unless anybody else has anything else to say?
Yeah, call motion. Thank, I think we're good, we can do a motion, uh, I'll do roll call motion, roll call votes for all, all the votes, um. Councillor Butler?
Nay.
Councillor Yuchik?
Aye.
Uh, councillor Moran?
Nay.
Councillor Shay?
Aye.
Councillor BB?
Nay, sorry, answer.
I'm in high, that's motion is a tie, three to three, so it fails. Um, so I will entertain other motions or other proposals.
Joe, seriously, when are you willing to work with us, like? It's like, I get it, we're all hurt, and I live in a twelve hundred square foot house. I just don't understand it, it's like you're holding us hostage, like, yes, you are, you're set.
You just don't listen to what you're on the class.
We are, I, it's my turn to, it's my turn to talk. I'm not mad, because you are a finance person, I respect you, it's just. I feel like we're trying to work together, and you're just sitting over here, and you won't even like budge a little. Like, Marily brings up a good point, but you wouldn't even think about, okay, maybe one point three or one point four, you know what I mean, like, there's gotta be some room that you're willing. Or maybe you're okay with things closing, I, I have no idea, and I don't mean to be rude and people listening, but I really feel like. We don't do what you want, Joe, it's going to fail. No, it's true, you send out texts, like Jacob, Alex, and I, and all of us work so hard together, and then you guys do this, and you don't even warn us you're doing it. So I think, you know, you don't think you have an influence, there is an influence. There is some sort of influence there.
If there was no influence, it wouldn't be done.
Right.
Nobody could spend the money on making a professional addict, it wasn't an influence, like, we, let's be realistic, right? It's, if, if there was no influence, there would be no point in doing it. That's why it's done, and we all need, we all know that that's how political advertising works, it is what it is, that's, that, it is what it is, that's, that's why it's done.
You guys are giving way too much credit for how this budget goes.
Yeah, sorry, that's, that's a little bit disingenuous.
Look at, look, you guys don't, look, look at the damn history of how this town votes, how do they vote, do they vote four percent? Do they vote three percent? They don't do it, and you guys ignore it.
We're not even in that realm anymore.
What? They've inherited its value for years and years and years, you guys are telling nothing new, nothing, this is the same shit year after year after year. They've inherited its value for years and years and years, you guys are telling nothing new, nothing, this is the same shit year after year after year.
But Joe, but Joe, if if that's true. Then won't it just fail without you texting everybody? Right, like, I'm not saying that when I was like pushing for a three or two percent, that I was like certain that it would pass, I thought that it was in the best interest of town, so I worked with Jacob. And I worked with Colleen, and I worked with Alex, and I worked with Jen, I really to try to, to try to put work why it should pass, right? But you're certain that it's going to fail unless it's at like one percent, so what, if that's true, then why do you need to promote a no vote?
So, because he wants it.
So, you guys all back on social media, you guys all see it, when you guys put out your text, how many, how many positive comments did you get about your text? I'm sorry, not text, yeah, how many positive comments did you get about?
Oh, it is, right.
No, 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 trust me.
It's the same people, I can, I could name them, I can name them all, same people from your side that comment over and over and over and over again. It it's the same people who have the same narrative over and over and over and over again. It's not different people, we're not, I mean, like, think of how many thousands of people are in this town. You get the same naysayers with the same message over and over and over and over again, and let's see. I think some of them, no, we got a couple of them online right now. You guys do it for a reason, as Merrily pointed out, there is no purpose in putting out a vote no. And paying money, because the TRTC paid money, this Connecticut GOP paid money for these text messages. Unless you want that result, unless you want to get people, and you know you're gonna get more people to vote no by doing that. So again, and this is the second meeting I'll see that, you're going to smoke up people's high knees by trying to say, oh, well, you're giving me too much power, now, Joe. This is how politics work, we're all politicians, we're all partisan, but a vast majority of us are trying to make an effort. To get on the same page, to try to educate the public, to try to get them to understand why we've made the decisions that we've made. But you seem to be the only person who is going out there promoting a no vote. And doing actually hardly anything on the record to try to come to a consensus, you just sit here silently, and then you go out on social media and you do your thing. So time and time again, we try, and and this year is a different year than last year, and it's a different year than any other year, but this year. Was the first time I've seen in a long time where the vast majority of us are trying to work together. And trying to come to an agreement together, but you seem to be the only person just holding out.
In a long time, we've been doing this for a year and a half.
I'm saying, I mean, the town town has been around for quite some time, I'm not saying us in general, it's been a long time. Since I've seen this many people in the town council attempting to work together, and it's a great thing, but you're the only one holding out.
I guess it, I think the council, prior to last year's disastrous council, I think the council worked together pretty well from the history that I've seen. When I was on council, it worked together very, we never had, we never had anything like.
So.
But philosophically, I don't agree, a hundred percent, I don't agree with you, I don't believe you have a huge tax increase. On individuals in this town, and then try to layer on more taxes, and again, our history shows how this town votes. And they don't vote for what you guys want, they just don't, so get over it and pass something legitimate.
Okay, so you have a majority on this council, and you have a majority on the board of ed.
Well, I'm doing, I'm a great majority on the board of ed.
Oh, you mean Republicans, I'm saying, so do it, like, do it, so pass the budget, that's fine, like, you're right, we can't pass the budget, we don't have majority, oh, I just.
You do.
Four Republicans.
Well, we're missing, we're missing someone.
That's what I said, I need, right, so you have the majority, uh, you're right, you're right, we don't have majority tonight, we don't have.
So. The remaining councillors. We had a motion that failed, we have several other scenarios here. Does anybody want to make a motion for another scenario? We are six in the room. Whatever we come up with will have to be some sort of compromise, and. You give me two, I'm up with eight, so. Can't make a motion, uh, make.
I'm at my high, and so you guys can decide what you want, and you can vote on it, but I'm not one hundred and one point two, it's higher than I want it to be, I wanna be a one.
I told you earlier, one.
So so what do we, what do you want for services for that one percent? No, 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 you're a finance guy, you, when you go before your company, we're the company, the town is the company, and you're proposing a budget. Know that you would have to say, this is what I want for the, for this expenditure, right, so what do you want for the one percent?
So, yeah, I wanted, I wanted to circle back to that comment that you had before, because I've been in corporate world for thirty five years, I've been through multiple downsides. Several, several over my career with different companies. I've never heard the executive branch of the company calling all the managers and say, what do you guys think you might be able to cut? You know, so we can reduce our costs, never happens, the executive branch puts down a general dictation that says, I need a ten percent across the board cut. I don't care how you do it, but our numbers gotta drop by ten percent, because if you ask every manager in command and say, what do you think you might cut, every manager is gonna say, I can't cut anything in my department. I ain't like, I ain't like maxed out, so you gotta go to another department, every department manager is gonna say that.
That wasn't, no. I understand, I understand, and I've been, I've been in the business world also, and I've also been down, so in fact, I've lost my job. In the other manufactured two thousand and eight bubble that we had, which was. You know, I laid an entire construction company off, um, and watched guys beg me for their jobs. Which was. Horrible, and then was out of work myself, so. Right, with and on, nothing, so. With a kid in college and one on the way, so I get it. What I meant by that was not, hey, guys, what do you think you can cut, give me something, but it was like. If you, if you were bringing something here, if this is what you're proposing, um, what are the impacts, what will the impacts be? When we make these cuts, right, what will the impacts to operations be, what will the impacts to customers be, what will the the impacts to the employees be? They at least know that, even if they may not discuss it with the, you know, corporate world, may not discuss it with. The employees or the public or whatever, and certainly when we're talking about people in the town, our citizens. We owe them that analysis, because when we're saying, we're gonna give you, we're gonna do one percent, but here's what it will mean for you. You won't have, the senior center will close, the library might close half the time.
See, that's the, that's the scare tactics that the Democrats sent out for the.
What, but what, what's, then what services can you maintain? What services can you maintain?
Ryan can't even tell you that tonight, you want me to tell you that, how can I tell you that? And the biggest cuts are coming from the board of ed, not from the town.
So what type of education system can you maintain? When we're not even covering the cost of insurance, and we're we're looking at, you know, the the. To 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 stay even, we were looking at at whatever, I, and I'm. We were looking at one point three million dollars, right, which wasn't even really keeping it even, but okay, we decreased from there. So at one percent, we are closing certain programs. What do we, what can we live without? What can we live without?
I might, I might call me, the board event called me, you want me to tell the board about what to do?
I want to understand what you think we are giving the town for this. Because we're not saying that we're not gonna have, we're not saying that like tomorrow. Everything will completely close, but we, but in this scenario, Ryan has told us before, he's got no fat left in his budget. He's gonna eliminate things. What, what do people want eliminated, what do you want eliminated? Because we know that if we're not staying even with inflation, we're eliminating things, we're living, we're, we're not. We're, we're cannibalizing our body, right, we're cutting off a piece of our body, so what part?
I'll give you the executive answer, I want my managers to tell me what they can afford to cut, and they, because they're gonna have to cut. So they make the decision, not me. My executive does.
And then your citizens out there are saying, well, what does that mean for me, does that mean that I'll have a senior center, does it mean I'll have a rec center, does it mean I'll have? The parks won't be open, what's the?
I won't tell. They know, they real, I think most people realize that there's gonna have to be cuts, just like in their lives, they've had to make cuts. They expect the government to have to make cuts, and they understand that that could potentially reduce services. They understand that that maybe we're not gonna have a a curriculum director in our board of ed, I don't know. I mean, what's, what's the easiest thing that the board of ed can cut, that's the least harmful thing, and that's what you cut. That's, that's the way, that's the way businesses work, that's the way this town has to work, that's the way people have to live. If people have to make cuts, government's gonna make cuts too, it's not a one-way street.
I'm not, it's not, you're, you're. It's definitely not a one-way street. Um, and since we're talking not national or local, we're just talking local, um, because I think nationally, there's a whole different scenario going on, but. I think it's very important so that people, when we, when we toss around numbers like that, and we toss around like, I'm an executive telling my people to do this. That the citizens understand what it is that's happening. And and when, when things are framed as this isn't worth it, right? It's not worth it, somebody, you know, we we are, I've heard curriculum director despair a lot, as if it's unnecessary, why is it unnecessary? Why? They have curriculum directors in private schools. Do they not need them in the public schools?
Not my question, I can't answer, that's the wrong question.
But you're, you're saying that we can cut it, that's an easy thing to do.
That was purely an example, I said, do you want me to tell him to cut a curriculum director, because it's not my responsibility to do that, I don't have the education to do that.
We don't have the authority to tell the board of ed to cut things.
Right, exactly, right, no, I'm, I'm, but I'm under, understanding that this is, this is something, we, I know, we don't have the authority to tell the board of ed, but.
But the board of ed has discussed this on many occasions, what's on the chopping block at what point. So most recently, they talked about what the reductions could be for the one point nine percent budget. Some of the things that they discussed cutting. Are school resource officers, a teacher at Birch Grove, the world language program, I believe it's the French program at the high school, in the middle of school, an additional teacher from the high school. As well as a full-time nurse, they're gonna be reducing medical supplies, they're gonna be reducing the time middle school athletics program. Freshman athletics, students' clubs and activities, a summer, summer custodian and maintenance worker. As well as language arts materials and textbooks, this was all discussed at this previous meeting. This was at a one point nine percent budget, now we're discussing, well, the one point two failed, but. We're discussing even a one point five is going to be a further cut, as a, as. So they're gonna go back and they're gonna discuss it again, they're gonna discuss the things that are gonna be reduced. But these are things that people have to take into consideration, is it worth? The, I don't know, what were you saying, under forty dollars a year?
In my scenario, it was thirty, but we, that's the number I chose, because it was easy for me to multiply for that.
Sure, sure, you know, is it worth doing that to the schools, and I think. The vast majority of the people in town are not sitting here with a microscope, looking at the budget process and what's going on.
Right.
They go on social media, they listen to what's going on, they may may re-oppose, they may read a a message somebody's making. You know, and there's, there's definitely people on the council, and there's definitely people who are in state government, who are gonna put out a message, and if we are. Helping people understand the impacts and what's going on. Then it's very easy to get people to vote no, it's extremely easy, it's much easier than to get people to vote yes. So, you know, we're either all together globally trying to educate the town. Or there's gonna be a group of us, we're gonna go out and do another vote no campaign, it's gonna be easy to get people to vote no, it's easy, once you put that doubt in someone's mind, they're voting no. But it's got a significant impact, and so as the board of ed does, the town's gonna do on their side too. You know, we discussed previously that reducing state troopers, the resident state troopers, it doesn't actually lose a person. You don't get people, you know, fired as a result, so maybe we will lose our our resident state trooper program, maybe we lose a trooper, maybe we lose two, maybe we lose three. But that, if I was the town manager, might be one area I'd be looking at. Because you're not actually letting someone go, they go back to troop C, which is still located here in Talent. Um, you know. Either way, it's gonna have huge impacts, you know, so you're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we said this before. For, I'm usually, the year scenario was forty dollars a year to save somebody. I mean, sometimes you gotta think, you know, are the services provided outweighing the. The dollar amount that's coming out of your pocket, you know, the, we're, we're not gonna get people down to where they were last year, it's not gonna happen. And as. The town manager stated previously, if we were to bring people down to where they were last year for their taxes. At some point, you're gonna have to stop reducing, because there's a constitution that says we have to get a free public education, at some point, there's a state law that's gonna say, we can't reduce the board of ed further. So everything's gonna come from the town side, and that's where you get into closing the senior center, losing the trash program, losing rec department.
Yep.
It's just the facts of life, you know, so that's where the education part comes into, because people are gonna expect that, that you're gonna be able to get them close to where they were last year, it's just not gonna happen.
Let me just put like a finer point on sort of things that have been said, and I don't anticipate it will persuade you, Counselor Shay, but. I agree, right, it's a two-way street, and um, we have to be mindful of the tax impact for this. Um, and and you may not think that we have gone far enough, right, but at least I think we need to be mindful that like, we. To get to this point, like, we have been cutting, right, and then you may not have agreed with where we started, whatever, right, but. There are already cuts, so it's not as though like we're starting from here, saying, give, give us all of this money, and we're not hurting, like the towns and cutting things, like, we are already doing that, right? So all I'm saying is like, when we're talking, when we're having these conversations, right, it's not as though. We haven't already been doing that, right, like, there are already cuts that led us to today, and then, you know, whatever happens tonight, there will be further, right, so. It's not like we are just saying, sorry, you have to have a massive tax increase, right, that's all I'm saying, it's like, I think you need, I think we need to keep that in mind.
Sorry, motion for another proposal.
I'll make the motion, because. Apparently, I will not, I can't allow help you later, because I'm, this is not my forte. I don't want any errors. Don't want to talk. I would like to propose Merrily Eeze one point five, and she's put forward, I don't know if I have to run down all these numbers, but. Part of that is a hundred and forty thousand dollars back to the board of education budget, sixty thousand dollars, town operating budget, but also the Fitch study. Um, I don't know how much more information I need to put in that, I have all the numbers, so it's, we're gonna be putting the numbers at the end, we're gonna do, I have to include.
Yeah, so again, I think we need to be very specific, so we need to probably opt for, um, Counselor Joan Kip, just say the increases, and I'm happy to go back to my guess. And give.
No, these are the increases right here, right?
Uh, sure, I think that's.
Yeah, you wanna just.
Double check.
Circle them for her, or?
Yeah, can we see it? You don't have the increases. There's gonna be increases, this is just the increase for all, but the beauty in time will help us. No, so I have to, okay, you should help me, let me, let me get to my desk.
Do I have?
She's gonna cut it.
I have a copy of that thing?
Of which, yes, you, you might have.
I think mine is what I wrote, how the motion for Counselor Shay, so I think he's still.
Get that.
Yeah, I wrote it on my own paper.
Sorry, give you a shit.
Oh, he's. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, my God.
Where's the?
It's increased project, that's actually the budget.
Hmm.
Yeah, the increase. Yep. But again, this is not additional on this. This is.
Just part of it. Just part of it.
Yes, so.
Okay. Okay. So, Yolita, I should see, we wanna make sure we have every detail correct on this one, so it has taken us a little longer. So, again, um. Merely, Tom Andrew and Merle B B's. Um, proposed with the. With the total revenues of sixty four million, six hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and twenty nine dollars. For an increase of nine hundred and fifty four thousand dollars. Nine hundred eighty nine. Um. And then. There's a hundred and forty. Board of Education, sixty thousand dollars to the town, but that's not additional. That's just. Part of the numbers. Ready, Yolita?
We need to clear, yes, part of numbers, but.
Yeah.
I think we should do how.
Councilor Shay did that, yeah.
Oh, Council, Councilman Joe did.
Yeah.
It's gonna be again.
Can you? Um, we see Councilor Shay's.
My. College of.
Yeah, we see that so we can replicate that format. And maybe Yolita, just you can help. Just fill out the numbers properly.
Yeah, her.
Oh, you want it exactly, mhm. The town operating budget, but can I just?
If it, if it makes it more straightforward, right? Like. Um, as you're doing this, I'm. Totally willing to say we have two, two hundred thousand dollars on assigned fund balance. And not have to divide it that way. If it makes it easier, right?
As it's logical with the spreadsheet or whatever.
If it, if it makes it easier and we.
Merely, does this further reduce? The board event budget? Like more than what?
That wasn't the intent.
There you go, but I think that's the effect.
I'm not sure how I'm thinking, so tell me how that works.
I can't tell you how that works.
Because, I mean, someone's gonna have to explain to me. Why were you even using the other side of balance? It doesn't. It doesn't make a difference. And do you agree?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's correct. That's what I was trying to say, that from last time when. Then the motion was made, it sounded like it was additional two hundred.
It was.
It was, and that's, yeah, I mean, that's.
And that was, now, and that increased the spending increase, right, and that's.
Yeah, I get it, changes the spending percentage. So I'm just like, so yes, so I, so agreed on the same page. And so my point is.
Merely.
What we're doing here doesn't.
You're doing is actually reducing the quarter of a budget further.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the, the, the way, the, you, the way we are currently proposing to use the assigned fund balance, it doesn't make. Any difference and it doesn't add to sort of a budget. So the only way to do that is to say. You know, say, say, say you start with the town managers one point five and then you say, I wanna give a hundred forty thousand dollars to the board, which that means. The spending increase isn't one point five, it's like one point seven or whatever, just right?
One point seven.
Right, right, one point, yeah, I'm just.
So if we, so if we rescind that, right? If we rescind that requirement, then we stay status quo where we are. Then do we not use any assigned fund balance?
Well, I think, I mean, in my opinion, and I don't support this, but in my opinion, if. We are going to go with like the one point five that the town manager put out, I don't know why would we use any assigned fund, or why would we use the two hundred thousand? So I don't know why.
Because to, to reduce the number rate.
Okay, so you're still applying the two hundred, you're still applying two hundred thousand to reduce to zero. Because as we did, okay. So you don't.
That, I think that's the intent, that's the intent, then that's. That's the intent, then that's fine.
Essentially think that. Council B B's motion is essentially the same as what was proposed by.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that, you know, and that's fine. I'm just wanting to make, I don't wanna spin this position that right way with the room. It's not, it's not. Adding anything back to it.
Yeah.
That's all I wanna be clear, and that's, I'm just making it clear.
And it's, and it is, so it's easier to. Not dedicate that allocation.
Yeah, it'd be easier to.
Then, then, then don't do that.
I think people probably don't.
Just put it out where, wherever, whatever Brian proposed.
I mean, you should say I moved to adopt the town manager's, his budget.
That's, that's it. That would be it.
Yeah.
Is that?
Please, I don't know.
So we're all the way back to this, okay? Does that mean that the wording is essentially the same as if we're not on our agendas?
Yeah, I would just say.
Okay. I'm sorry, muddy the water with that.
Do you, well.
If we just do the town manager's one point five budget, do we have to go through every number?
I would just say I would.
Town manager's budget, the dollar amount, right? And you, you can see the increase on each side, town and B B. To be clear, and then we can do the math, calculate how much to reduce, which we already know.
Thank you.
Six point nine to increase.
Yeah, oh. You know, if you wanna just make sure.
So this is the term operating budget, one point nine. The O U S, it just increases, it increases, yeah. And then the mill rate is one point five.
Twenty seven point nine.
Because it wasn't on the agenda.
Yeah, it wasn't on the agenda, but we, we, it seems just to say that's an increase on.
Well, I have to really exactly draw it out.
Any increase, the overall of the, the. Spending increase of one point five percent from the FY twenty five.
Great.
So, do we need to rescind it?
Nobody's sent in any of those motions, so I would just continue.
No, I would like to. Put a motion for the town managers, one point five, um. Following numbers, the town operating budget, one hundred and forty nine thousand. Fifty seven dollars, Board of Education budget is six hundred and thirty nine thousand, one hundred and three dollars. Capital Improvement Fund is one hundred and sixty six thousand, eight hundred and twenty nine dollars. For a total increase of nine hundred and fifty four thousand, nine hundred and eighty nine dollars with a mill. Uh, rate of twenty seven point nine. With a, um. I'm sorry, twenty seven. Point one nine, I just said twenty seven point one nine, thank you, Joe. Uh, for your twenty twenty five adopted budget. Is that right?
And could you, I'm, I'm, I hate to make you do this, please read it one more time really loud.
Okay, so again, town manager, I would like to propose or put a motion for, for the town manager's. Budget of one point five for the following amounts, town operating budget, one hundred and forty nine thousand, fifty seven dollars. Board of Education budget, six hundred and thirty nine thousand, one hundred and three. Capital Improvement Fund, one hundred and sixty six thousand, eight hundred and twenty nine. For a total increase of nine hundred and fifty four thousand, nine hundred and eighty nine dollars. For, for a mill rate, excuse me, twenty seven. Point one nine fiscal, uh, year town budget. Of twenty, or, I'm sorry, fiscal year twenty twenty five adopted budget. Why not? Why am I missing? I don't understand.
So the increase of one point five percent. From the FY twenty five adopted.
All right, one point five percent from the.
FY twenty.
FY adopted budget.
Twenty five adopted budget.
Twenty twenty five adopted budget, there it is. There's a lot of numbers.
Please say you, you, you got it or?
Yeah.
The last part you just said, can you repeat that?
Yep, so the last part was for an increase of a one point five percent.
I have to adopt it among managers' proposed budget.
Yeah. You wanna do the whole thing or?
No, just that start part.
Was the, the town managers, one point five percent proposed budget, yeah.
Did you mention the total dollar amount?
Yep, I did, nine hundred fifty four thousand, nine hundred and eighty nine.
That increased the total of sixty four million.
I didn't. For the total overall budget for the town is sixty, the Board of Education, capital sixty four million. Six hundred and twenty dollars, nine hundred, six hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and twenty nine dollars. Is that all? Oh my god, not a math major.
He's just like, my, I wanna do math with him.
We're being very specific.
No, it's good, it's good.
Motion's been made, is there a second to that motion? Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second for the point of discussion.
Alright, motion's been made and seconded. Alright, is there any discussion? Oh. So, can I, or?
Go ahead, say what you're gonna say. I'm, I'm so trying to write numbers down, but I'm.
I'll say, um, as I said. We don't know about a one point five. But I do recognize that we do need some consensus. I will support a one point five. I will continue to advocate for it. Um, if this is my person as it can be. Um, close the gap significantly, um, between the first record and the second. Um, and still want to do, like, try to close the gap on, on this, so we can get it passed. Um, two weeks from now. And, um. You know, like, I. We're gonna get, we're low, I want, I want this thing to, to go through. So. Say that, obviously Councilman Chuck would do that as well. Given that you made a motion. So. So we stand. Is there any other discussion?
This is still very hard for me. I, I recognize, um. I recognize where we are, I recognize what we've had as, as far as failure, this is so very, very difficult for me. Um, do we need to? We, we identified the proposed. Uh, allocations for each side, right? For the D O U side and the V N S.
Yeah, we did. Do you need the numbers again, Arlen?
So this, if we're looking at. Six ninety three and one forty nine. We're still not even covering the cost of insurance. So. I guess. I guess what I would like to, I, what I would like to say is that. The total increase is a little over eight forty two and our insurance increases a million and that doesn't begin to cover. Or electricity or anything else. It's just insurance that we're, we're still not, we're not, we're still not covering it, so. Um, yeah, it means that. All of that other stuff is. When it come out of services. Because, and it, and it has to.
No, but the residents keep slowing it down. We're stuck. I get it.
Yeah.
We're not, we just put it forward and they get to vote.
So, we, yeah, so we gotta, we gotta.
That's the, that's the outcome.
Electricity and fuel and transportation and that's.
Yeah.
We got, you know. Then. Sixty percent of that or seventy percent of it. So. And that's not. That's not. Talking about covering those basic expenses is not nickel and dime in people. It's covering the expenses. And it's covering the, the, the people that have it in that, that we, we, that we have. Right, we have to pay. So. Tell her the source, she weren't gonna pay him or. Your insurance company or anything else, so.
If we go and do just cover those basic expenses, we're gonna be higher than where we were.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. We are, we are not willing to cover our basic expenses. I just want that to be very, very, very clear.
Councilor Shay, do you support this budget?
I will say. This is meant to be a neutral comment towards Councilor Shay, and I don't want to. Have a discussion about this, but. You know, the last budget, we were able to decrease the margin considerably. Forty new votes from over four hundred. Um, you know. One point five, I think it's still a tough sell, you know? Need to continue to support it. Try and get it, try and get it through. We've got, we have very tough decisions to make as a council. That's where we are right now. Um. You know, we've used considerable. Um, we've used our funds considerably. Um, next year. We've got, you know, a million dollar hole to plug from. Two million, well, one million from the motor vehicle tax. Plus, uh, an additional million, you know, from all the money that we, we used this year. Um, that will have to be, have to be plugged before we even talk about the contractual increases. Um, based off of, uh, some of the analysis that Yolita put together. Um, if we were. If next year's council were to. Go into assigned fund balance again, which they probably will have to dip into it at some level next year simply because. Um, they won't be able to get a pa, budget passed without it. They will be. Going from a nice healthy above the policy level to smack dab up in the middle of it. And then the following year, probably below ten percent. So. I don't really see that as.
I, I don't think so. Not based on, not based on the numbers that we, we're looking at, um, but it, it. Yeah, we, I, I, I don't wanna muddy the motion in front of us, but that's another, that's a side issue that we should discuss.
Yeah.
And I just wanna say. Again, uh, you know, we'll, we'll never be, be certain, but certainly last year. We, we, we haven't actually used the assigned fund balance that we thought we would be using. So that's, you know. Yep, we have got good investments and, and we don't, can't be sure that that's gonna happen, but to be clear. Even when we have a lot of due, you know, assigned fund balance, private budgets, when the private budget, we didn't actually use.
But we're using way more this year and we know that we have a million dollar cap.
Sure.
About anything else. And that's, that's the point. That's, that's why I get so sensitive about wanting to use it. Because setting the, next council up to fail, we pick up to leave those numbers. That's, this plane is gonna get back to bottom. Let's say, and I like the one point five, but I will support it. Is there any other discussion of one point five? Right, well, there's no discussion about it. Um, I think we're gonna go, do roll call vote. Uh, Council B B.
Yeah.
Um, sorry, I'm so tired. I was looking at you expecting.
Alright, we'll just go in the opposite direction this time.
Councilor Shay.
Nay.
Councilor.
Nay.
Councilor Yudj.
I.
Councilor.
Nay.
I'm an I as well, said motion fails because it's high. Alright. Um. Alright, well, we're past one point five. Alright, well, we're past one point five, we're past one point two.
And I'm not gonna go any higher, so. I don't understand this Merrily, but you voted for it, but I mean Merrily, budget, foreign manager, and I just don't, I feel like we're gonna be here all night, it's just. Already painful.
Look, I mean, one point five is way lower than I want to go, and so is our use of the outside fund balance, which we don't have to get into. But I'm not willing to vote, like, I can't, my conscience won't let me vote for it, if, if Counsel Shay's not gonna agree with it, it doesn't matter, and so that's sort of my.
That's exactly where I am, yeah.
Close the margin. Two hundred and sixty, two hundred and seventy, it's regarded as. But I understand the concern about Counsel Shay. Obviously, I wrote the letter with you, Counsel Moran. But I think we do have some influence here, anything bringing you down does matter. People to vote on, you know, and.
Yeah, I know, and I, I've been working towards that, and, but you know.
Yeah. Or the minimum.
I also have, I also have like a, like, a floor too, right, like.
Yeah.
Counsel Shay has a ceiling, and I have a floor, and like you said, I'm one vote, and, you know, that's, I, I'm not, and I will also say. I won't, no matter what the budget passes out here, I won't publicly, even if I don't know, I won't publicly try to fail. I just don't know, I just don't know. Why, why we're not gonna be exactly so.
Without due respect, Jacob, you wrote. The letter with Chris. Your town committee wouldn't even put it on their page.
Well, I'm pretty aware.
I, I understand you're aware, what I'm saying is. If we aren't all together on the same page, what is the point, cause we're delaying, cause we're gonna be repeating, as we start talking about history, we're gonna be repeating history. If again. Your committee's not publishing your letter on their page, they're sending out a vote no text, and we end up, cause it, like I said, it's, I think it's easier to convince people to vote no. Than to vote yes. I think we all need to be on the same page, I think we've all been compromising this entire time, we're just waiting on one individual to compromise as well. And that means getting your entire group on board with at least being silent i- in neutral. About the budget. If town council chair writes a letter in support of the budget, put it on the page. And these are, these are simple moves that can help this process, but instead everyone's gonna. Just make it more difficult.
I'll ask the chair, what do we do next if nobody's actually gonna? I don't mean to be rude, but it's, it seems, I get what everybody's saying, I mean, I really, I, I really understand, I feel like that's where we're at, and. Oh, Brian, what happens?
We keep going.
Yep.
Can we do a quick recess, please? For recess, I'll move. Second.
Second.
Those in favor?
I.
Pause back from recess. Alright, thank you, are there any, um, further budget motions?
Um, so I just wanna, you know. Then Counsel Yudichak, I, you know, I, I mean, not everyone, but I know you with the, especially reading, rattling off all the numbers last time, you were, you know, trying to. To, to, to arrive at some consensus to get us, um, to move us forward, right? One point five percent is certainly. Uh, you know, it's, it's not where I want to be, I, the cuts to the town board of ed are significant, um, but, you know, understanding where we are. And in the interest of, you know, again, still trying to work together to, to find a way through this, um. I would support Counsel Yudichak's, um, prior motion, and so I move to recall the question that Counsel Yudichak had put forward. Well, I, hopefully she's looking in the record and, and, um, doesn't have to read it all over here.
You have to read it all.
I, I feel you. Well.
I don't think ours came in.
Yeah, I think you're good, it's the exact same motion, correct?
Yes.
Common question, one point five percent. Is there a second to read, I think we need to, yeah, there should be a second. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Alright, um, we already discussed it, so we're just gonna go to a vote, uh, Counsel Butler?
Aye.
Counsel Yudichak?
Aye.
Counsel Moran?
Aye.
Counsel Shay?
Aye.
Counsel B B?
Aye.
I'm an I as well, so that passes five to one. Right, thank you. Um, as I reiterated, I will publicly support this budget, and I will as well.
I will as well pass.
Alright, that moves us to item six, which is approval or resolution arising before the ballot for the June third budget referendum, any subsequent budget referendum. Um, we do have a proposed budget form, which is the same resolution that we have used in the past, um. Is there any discussion about performing that question?
That's what we fill in the blank.
Right, we're not gonna throw this secondary question on, again, right?
Yeah.
I know that there was some people that mentioned in emails that they were still looking for that secondary question, so I think it was a really good idea to did it.
Yeah.
Um, and I think it worked, but I just want to make sure we're not considering it again.
I think we're just beginning as, as a.
Yeah, okay. Just work here.
So, um. As, uh, you would have actively filled in the mouth, okay, I will let you be. Nothing in this session, you know?
No. Which, you want to do it?
Go ahead. Oh, you're, you're just gonna read it?
Do you want me?
Yeah, you can fill in them, yeah, yeah, we should, we should read it out, yes. I'll do it. Thanks. Okay, in regards to the draft resolution, I'm gonna read, uh, number one, item number one, the ballot question for the June third referendum is follows. Shall the town, town of towns propose twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget of sixty-four million, six hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars? Reflect a spending increase of one point five percent, which requires an estimated tax rate of. Two seven point one nine mils for a decrease of ten point five eight mils for twenty-eight point zero one percent be adopted. I'll run through the numbers again, uh, just the numbers. Six four, six two zero nine two nine in the first box, six four, six two zero nine two nine in the first box. One point five in the second box. Two seven point one nine in the third box. One zero point five eight in the. Second to last box, and in the last box, twenty-eight point zero five. Sorry. All good? Is there a motion to adopt the draft resolution?
I'm not.
Thank you, Counsel Butler, is there a second?
I'll second.
Alright, any discussion? Fantastic, um, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Staying, staying, right? Uh, motion passes and is adopted, um, brings us to adjournment, is there any objection to adjournment? Nope, seeing that, we are adjourned the, the next day.